Thank you so much TJ. Good morning. We will call this on Monday, July 6, 2020, work session to order. And again, good morning, citizens of Douglas County, and also good morning to our Board of Commissioners. Thank you for being here this morning. Before I start, I would like to call roll. I don't see it on the screen. But I do see Vice Chairman Robinson, District 2, if you just respond, present.
Present.
Okay. Trenia Carthen, Commissioner of District 3.
Present.
Okay, District 1 Commissioner Henry Mitchell III.
Present.
And District 4 Commissioner Anne Jen Skater. I see you, but I can't hear you. Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, no problem. So we have all our Board of Commissioners here this morning. Thank you so much. This morning, I have some presentations, Board of Commissioners, but before I go into those presentations, I want to encourage you to please review the minutes for tomorrow and be prepared to approve accordingly. So we'll start this morning with Dr. Me Mark and Lisa Crossman. But before they start, I do have just five slides that I want to share with the citizens as we move quickly. So I will start with just a PowerPoint, and it's going to talk about briefly about just some things that want to encourage our citizens to do in terms of face coverings and make sure that you continue to go with the social distancing component and washing your hands. Just want to make the citizens aware that I'm rolling out, along with the Board of Commissioners, an educational campaign to reduce the coronavirus spread in Douglas County. The numbers are up, and I'm quite sure Dr. Me Mark and Lisa Crossman will share that information with our citizens this morning. The purpose of this robust campaign is to heighten awareness and educate the Douglas County citizens about the impact of adhering to the Centers of Disease CDC guidelines to help reduce the spread of coronavirus. There are three Ws out there. Would like for you to wear, you know, certainly recommended, wear a face mask, or either you could use cloth face coverings, washing your hands is very important, and watch your social distancing. That is so important as we go forward. Next, the next slide is, we'll talk about, it's only five, and I certainly don't want to steal our doctor's thunder this morning, educational campaign. As businesses and operations reopen here in Douglas County, there has been an increase in the COVID-19 positive cases in Douglas County. So while testing results increases the probability of the positive test, there's evidence of community spread, and Dr. Me Mark will highlight that in a few minutes. Since the reopening of the county, there has been a noticeable decline in people wearing masks or either cloth face coverings. So certainly that's something we're just highly recommending and encouraging our citizens to just please participate in this movement as we try to reduce the spread of COVID-19 in Douglas County, and also not only here, but in the state of Georgia and all across this globe. CDC has a scientific study out there that indicates that cloth face coverings are one of the most effective means of reducing the spread of coronavirus. Certainly encouraging those citizens that are under two years old. Certainly CDC do not require that you wear a mask, and also those citizens who have trouble breathing, unconscious, incapacitated, or otherwise.
Bob is now joining.
The risk and inaction of wearing face coverings are really high and potentially likely fatal for elderly persons and individuals with serious underlying conditions. Scientific evidence reveals that a substantial number of citizens still can contract the virus by just by showing symptoms, and they could be certainly asymptomatic, but you can certainly contract it by somebody just simply speaking, coughing, or sneezing on you as a citizen. And then our fourth slide is the campaign is centered around the importance of wearing masks and cloth
is now joining.
cloth face coverings during this pandemic. CDC is recommending face coverings be worn in public settings. And again, citizens and Board of Commissioners and our entire government employee staff, this is a unified fight, and we cannot take this virus lightly, because if we do, the virus will take us. I encourage you to find a face, find a mask or a face covering that fits properly and feel comfortable. It's so important that your masks are comfortable. Certainly, as a person who has worked in surgery extensive time of her life, I understand it's like a shoe. A mask is similar to a shoe. If it does not fit, it's uncomfortable, and it really can be very agitating. So I encourage you to find a mask that fits and encourage you to wear when you're in public. And my last slide would just highlight the components of the campaign. And thank you, Board of Commissioners, for joining me with this campaign. The campaign, you will see billboards throughout our entire county, citizens indicating, please wear your face mask, and also social distance, and also your hand washing. Facebook advertisements, we have some of those already rolling out. Thank you so much, our Communications Department. Our public safety announcements, we have one that will be, we have an announcement coming out through Comcast very soon on various channels. So citizens and Board of Commissioners, you will see a commercial very soon. Flashing variable lights and message boards will be out through the county. Community emails and social media, we're working very hard. You will see some bold signage throughout our county. Magnetic bumper stickers encouraging those when you're sitting in the, I call it in traffic, and you look and you notice that, oops, I may have forgotten my mask. And four-page ads in the Douglas County media outlets throughout our entire county. Rotating messaging on our Connect Douglas buses. And finally, our weekly news report, DC Communication Department team. And I believe we are heading into our 14th weekly report. So we have had 14 weeks of reports from our Communication Department. And then also, we have extensive information that is being continually rolled out from our department. So again, citizens of Douglas County, and we want to take this matter very seriously. So I encourage you, all of us, to protect ourselves and also our fellow citizens. With that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Me Mark and Lisa Crossman as soon as possible. So at this particular time, I will turn this over to Dr. Me Mark and Lisa Crossman.
Good morning, Madam Chair, and thank you for having us today. And thank you to the Board of Commissioners for allowing us to give this update today. We do have a slide deck. I hope they can pull them up, otherwise we can pull them up if we need to. Wasn't sure if they received them or not.
Why don't you go ahead, Dr. Me Mark? I think it had been delayed getting over to.
Okay, so it's stuck in our firewall?
It looks like it.
Okay, let me pull it up and make sure I got the right one. Okay, all right. All right, let me see if I can share. Yeah. Okay. Sorry. All right, can everybody see that? Did it pull up?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, so here's our update today. So when you look, as of July 5, are positive cases, these are Georgia numbers, and you know that we have that little bit of a delay over on the right side that shows the two weeks that all the numbers quite aren't in yet. But you can definitely see how, you know, I've been asked all kinds of questions about whether this is a second wave or anything like that. I don't think we actually came off of the first wave that much. So we had a little bit of a dip, and then you can see how our trajectory is really just straight up right now. But the good thing is, is that the number of deaths really has not, you know, shown that same trajectory. But, you know, it could be because they're younger people. It could be a delay that after the cases arrive, you can see the deaths will follow later. Right now, we're not quite sure, but right now, it does seem to be younger patients that seem to be admitted at this time. When you look at our cases here in Douglas County, you can see how we have about 1,100 cases in Douglas, but you see the activity in some of the surrounding counties, and especially in Fulton and DeKalb, you can see that there's definitely a lot of cases that are in the surrounding counties. When we look at this timeline, let me just pull that up for you. We can see back in March, how on the 27th, we had Douglas as shelter in place. And we're really thankful to you all, because you're always ahead of the game in what we've been doing as related to COVID efforts, and we're extremely grateful for that. But you can see how the cases have continued to rise. And then we got to, you know, back in June, just a month ago, we had 594 cases, and we mentioned that we have over 1,100 cases on July 5. Here are our current conditions. We've talked about the number of cases that we have. The hospitalizations of those cases is about 198, and deaths were 36. And of those deaths, 19 were in long-term care facilities. Currently, there are seven outbreaks in Douglas County that includes long-term care facilities, churches, and businesses. We continue to see that number increase. If there are seven in Douglas, we have, I think, about 75, 80 total outbreaks in the district. So there's a lot of activity going on. A lot of people want to know what's going on in the hospitals. The hospitals have definitely shown an uptick. They have 21 confirmed patients right now. 14 of those are waiting to be ruled out, so not quite having a diagnosis of COVID-19. We have 10 patients in their ICU beds. Six of those are positive and two are waiting. And we have seven beds that are available for ICU in Douglas. And this is just the Douglas, Wellstar Douglas Hospital. And on the 29th of June, we saw the highest one-day number of patients that had COVID-related syndromes that came to the emergency department. When you go to our website, you can see some of the mapping of what the cases look like and where they're concentrated. And so they give you a little picture, and that gets updated. This is a comprehensive view of what we've had. And then here, you can see the number of cases rise. And as you see, you know, you can see all the ups and downs that go about, but you can definitely see the increase in the trend here. And what is concerning to me is that the positivity rate has been as high as 14%. Now, we have gotten that number down below 3%. So of all people, if 100 people came to the drive-through testing site, only 3% came back positive. Now, out of 100 people, 14 are coming back positive. So that tells you a little bit about the transmission and spread throughout the community. We're seeing something similar in Cobb County as well. And you see throughout Georgia, there are many pockets that are seeing this. Here's the age cases, but when you look back in April, you can see that we had more of a kind of bell-shaped curve of people that were being diagnosed with COVID. Now, we have a lot more younger people. So you see it's weighted a little bit heavily on this side. And the hospitalizations do look to also mirror that a little bit. A lot more people in their 20s and 30s and 40s are being hospitalized, but we do still have people in their 50s and 60s as well. There's slightly more females and males, but we do have more females that are being tested and slightly more blacks and whites that are being diagnosed. All right, so the solutions that we have. We continue to request that the medically fragile continue to shelter in place. So of the deaths that we have had, when I look at the deaths, only four out of those 36 had no underlying condition. So that gives you an idea. It's close to 90% that do have some sort of underlying condition. Social distancing, everybody needs to social distance. When we give you a call as a contact tracer, we really would like you to tell us that you did not have contact within six feet for 15 minutes with somebody, because that person, if you come back positive, that person is now exposed and has to be quarantined. That's my goal, is to make sure that we don't get people that are within six feet. Wear your cloth face coverings. Lisa, we'll talk a little bit about some of the evidence that we have when you have that, but if you, I mean, we recommend that you try to wear them at all times. You don't know when you're going to come in contact with somebody. So if you're around people, go ahead and wear your face coverings, especially if you're within six feet. If you are sick, please, you have to stay home. The symptoms of COVID vary from sore throat, straight up to chills and fevers. And what we've seen of hospitalizations is fever seems to be one of the highest indicators of people that are in the hospital had fevers. Make sure you cover your cough and sneezes. We do that in the elbow now. Wash your hands all the time. Get tested and isolate if you're positive. And so this is a great time to bring up this whole thing about the false positives. That is not a thing. False negatives are much more of an issue than false positives. If you are positive, you are positive. You must isolate, and we have to find the people that you expose. The, you know, the tests right now pick up the genetic fragments, and having a false positive is very rare. Respond to your contact tracers, please. If you receive a call from the Department of Public Health, please answer and help us out. This is the only way that we have to try to get control of the virus. And quarantine, please don't go out and out and about when you are supposed to be quarantining. So be kind to others, to yourself in such a difficult time. This is a very, very difficult time, and so we, the only way that we're going to beat this is if we all do it together. Honestly, it just can't be just certain segments of people that do it. And we need everybody to help out right now. Lisa's going to talk a little bit about the test. Oh, I'll talk about the testing, sorry Lisa. So we continue to have testing, and so there is no charge. You do not need a doctor's referral. There is no charge. You just need to go on our website and sign up. I know there's been a little bit of difficulty in getting space. We have tripled our capacity for Douglas County and our testing site, and it still seems to not be enough. And so right now, at this very moment, they are looking for ways to further expand that site over at Douglas Public Health and try to make a second lane there. We've been really constricted with locations. We've also partnered with the Metro Atlanta Ambulance Service and the Wellstar Health System to offer some satellite testing. So they are going to be going to New Mountain Top Baptist Church, as well as American Legion and Vision Concept. And we're working on another
is now exiting.
Another partner to help us to do outreach testing and maybe some pop-up testing sites, because it has quickly outstripped our capacity to do this.
Is now joining.
Talk a little bit about cloth face masks.
Good morning, everyone. So one more addition before I move into face mask. I just want to reinforce what Dr. Me Mark said about making sure to get tested and to isolate if you're positive. We are hearing about a number of people who get tested, are positive, and then because they might still be asymptomatic or not feeling sick, they're continuing to go about their life. And so that's a real concern, because they're carriers and passing it along to other people. And so we need to really reinforce to folks that if you get tested and you're positive, it's important to isolate for the time that CDC recommends. If you are identified as a direct contact, we also need you to quarantine for the recommended time. That's one of the few things that we have in order to box this virus in and be able to get on top of it. All right, one of the other tools that we have is the cloth face coverings. There's a lot of questions about this, and the research really is very solid about the benefits of the cloth face coverings as a simple barrier. The idea is that when I, if I'm positive, whether I'm having symptoms or not, if I am positive for COVID-19, that the way that I'm transmitting that is through respiratory droplets, either when I'm speaking, coughing, sneezing, singing, laughing, that those respiratory droplets are going to come out, and they're going to land on someone else, on their hands that they then wipe their eyes with, or eat, and put their fingers in their mouth, that it's on a surface, and then I touch the surface and do that. And so the idea of a cloth face covering is that it keeps my respiratory droplets against me, and it keeps them from transmitting out to someone else. And so it's really one of the few tools that we have in order to combat this virus. So we're strongly recommending that when you go out in public, that you wear these. Next. So we've put a link on this slide deck, and we'll make this available, Rick, through, so other folks can link this. This emerging evidence links over to CDC's website about the cloth face coverings and the studies that are being done. Basically, it's showing that when I cough and I don't have, and I don't have any covering on my face, that those droplets are spewing out. Just keep that in your mind as a frame of reference, that those droplets are spewing out several feet onto other people. And what we're seeing is that if you can have a cloth face mask, it doesn't completely protect you, right? This cloth face mask is only doing a little bit to protect me from getting COVID, because I can still move it and eat and put my fingers in my mouth or rub my eyes, things like that. But the benefit is to the people around you and keeping those droplets from being spread. Next. So the reason that you're hearing both things, you're hearing the social distancing and the use of cloth face masks, is that we have very few tools in our arsenal to fight this virus. One of them is to get tested and to know your status, and then to be able to isolate or quarantine appropriately. The other is that by wearing a cloth face mask, that I can then reduce the impact to somebody else. These are two models to help explain this. So you can see that if I am in this first column of asymptomatic or symptomatic, if I have COVID, if I'm positive for COVID, and then I don't wear a face covering, and another person nearby me doesn't wear a face covering, then the chance of transmission is tremendously high. That's maximum exposure. But then, as you go down that list, you can see that if my risk of transmission of the virus is very low, or is low, if we are both wearing cloth face masks, and then very low if we're wearing masks and also six feet apart. There's, of course, no risk if I stay in my house and the other person stays in their house. But we're assuming that people are wanting to be able to get out and about, and so this is a way that we're able to expand and do business, continue to do business in the community while also making sure to reduce the risk of transmission. So we really thank the Commissioners for being able to support this campaign out in the community. Thank you, Chairman Robinson, and so, or Jackson Jones, excuse me. And we appreciate being able to have the residents of Douglas County come together and do their part. I think that if we all do this, we'll be able to get in front of this virus, because right now, we're just seeing a spike, and we're not in front of it at all. Pictures that you see here, we just thought we'd share some of them with you. These are pictures of our public health staff at our public health centers and at our testing sites. You can see that we all are wearing masks at every point that we're ever in contact with other folks. And so if you come into our locations, we do ask that you wear a mask and that you will see our staff wearing them as well. And then on a final note, if we have nonprofits in the community that are having trouble getting masks, we have those available and can make those and get those out to you. I think just the other day, we got some out to the library systems and to the city and county government. So we're happy to provide those as well. Dr. Me Mark, anything else you want to add about the masks?
No, no, we don't have a whole lot of things that we can do to combat this. And unfortunately, it seems like it's just masks and being able to distance a bit. Those are really the best weapons that we have right now.
Dr. Jackson Jones, anything else you want to add? I know that this ties in with your mask campaign. And so again, we're really appreciative of the support and your influence on this.
Thank you so much, Dr. Me Mark, and also Lisa for being here this morning to certainly impress upon our citizens the importance of face coverings in all the things of social distancing and continued hand washing. This is certainly an effort on all of our parts, and I'm just so optimistic that our citizens will take heed and listen and try to help with fight this war. Again, I mentioned earlier in the, I call it before the campaign, this is a marathon and certainly not a sprint, so we have a ways to go. I know a vaccine is certainly, is it on the horizon right now? Have we heard anything? If you all could give us an update about a potential vaccine or what's going on with that, Dr. Me Mark?
Our understanding is that there have been a few that are entering phase three trial.
Is now exiting.
And it's optimistic that we will have something by the end of the year, but, you know, really, that's quite a while. And, you know, and we're not sure how effective it will be at that point. So right now, it's really early in the game, and I don't think that, I don't think we should be kind of living right now for the vaccine, but do everything we can in the meantime until we can get there. And that will just be kind of gravy on top to protect us some more.
Okay, and certainly before I yield to the Board of Commissioners, I'm quite sure they have some questions. Certainly, if you could share with us about the antibody testing that allows, you know, to see who's been exposed and who's not. Can you share about that? Is that coming on the horizon for Douglas County and other counties in the future?
Well, you know, there's a lot of that happening right now, but there's also a lot of questions as to what that means. And so, you know, and the quality and validity of those tests are still kind of being questioned right now. So we don't know how long antibodies last. There has been some reports that it only lasts a few months. And then we also don't know how much protection it gives to everybody. And so there's a lot of question marks on that. It seems like mostly private folks are the ones that are offering the antibody test. If the science confirms, you know, the protection with the antibodies, I'm sure that DPH will get involved with that now. But right now, they're kind of doing just some surveillance, you know, testing, and just to get an idea of who has antibodies at this point.
Yes, certainly, the science and data is very important. And with that being said, I'm going to yield to my Board of Commissioners to see if they have any questions. Any questions, Board of Commissioners, this morning? Commissioner Skater, I saw Commissioner Skater's hand, and Vice Chairman, I'll come back to you. Commissioner Skater.
All right, thank you. And I'll be brief. The tracking that y'all are doing, is there any common denominator as to where the spread is happening? I know a lot of our young people are going to Six Flags. They're also working at Six Flags. And I don't know if they are taking public transportation. I'm just wondering, is there any kind of common denominator that shows how, where it is spreading?
That's a great question. Right now, what we're seeing is just younger people. And so our assumption is that it's probably from people congregating somewhere, whether it was, you know, parties and celebrations, or if they attended the protest, or somewhere where groups of people will be coming together, and they're out and about. So the younger folks of the 20s and 30s and 40-year-olds that we're seeing. But right now, I mean, we're not seeing any other true pockets. There's a lot of business activity, and so you can see anybody that gets it, if they had a job, that that's going to be associated. But Six Flags just recently opened, and they have taken a lot of precautions to do their best out there. But I don't think we've heard anything about that yet.
Yeah, I was just going to add to that, Commissioner. We worked for several weeks with Six Flags, and they worked with their national office to make sure that they could do everything they could to open safely. They've reduced capacity dramatically. They are doing temperature checks and requiring masks being worn. All of their rides require seats between individuals. And we haven't seen an outbreak that's tied to Six Flags at all yet. So I wouldn't say that even though that makes you go, hmm, and we're watching it real closely too, that's, we're seeing it all over. And as Dr. Me Mark said, it seems to be more related to all of the gatherings that started happening around Memorial Day and then continued after that. I think that we just kind of got complacent. We all got excited about Memorial Day and being back in the summer and school being out formally, that folks started to let their guard down. And so with all the businesses opening, with families getting together, with church services starting to open, we're not seeing any particular area where we would identify that as an outbreak. We're just truly seeing widespread community transmission now.
And one last question. Are you keeping up with the asymptomatic people that have the virus, but they're, they have no symptoms?
Yeah.
What percentage, what percentage of the numbers that you gave us earlier are asymptomatic?
Some of the numbers that we see, probably about 30% that are asymptomatic. And all of those, anybody that comes back with a positive test will eventually get called by public health. But once you get that result, But once you get that result, it may take a few days for us to get to you because of the increase in the numbers. And so everybody is given instructions to isolate at home and await our call. And we'll kind of help you out from there.
As Dr. Me Mark said, that with up to 30% of the people being asymptomatic, you know, that means that a lot of folks are walking around that don't feel sick, wouldn't be in our usual way identified to take action to stay at home, right? They could be spreading it before they even know it. And so that's why, one of the main reasons we're promoting the cloth face coverings, the social distancing and getting tested because those three things together will help to reduce the possible transmission by people who are not having any symptoms.
I yield back. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Guyer. Commissioner Robinson, Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, everybody. So here we are, you know, as you said, two, three months later. And I'm encouraged by the fact that we do now have data to help drive our decision making. I'm encouraged to hear that we have testing to see how infested our garden is. Now we're talking. Now we're.
That's an interesting, that's an interesting visual that our garden is infested. I think I'm gonna use that in the future.
Yes, yes, yes. So I'm glad we're good, we're good. Right, so to that point, and I appreciate the maps and people do ask the questions. Well, where is it? They're trying to find points of origination, like is it public transportation versus the church or workforce? So wherever the case may be, I get it. But here's my question, which is simply, we did Plan A, shelter in place. Did a great job. Douglas did an awesome job. I really think we did. We held our own. We're not as dense as, we're dense, but we're not as dense as maybe the major cities because of the population bulk. I get that. But here we are, this thing's spiking. And I'm gonna ask, and I need y'all, the medical people to put you ahead of them. We're gonna go back to the pins, like cause no harm. Like, okay, so this thing is spiking. And I don't want us to step over it like it doesn't exist or that it's gonna be okay, which it will be. But how do we get ahead of this? And I get what we're saying by doing things such as putting on the cloth and so forth. But as I say, I touched so many ATMs, I had to go buy a little thing to push the stuff because it's all about touch. Yet we're spewing, but it's all about the contact and I get that. So let me get down to my three questions I've got. First question is, should we mandate? Are we at a point of mandating? I mean, I'd be able to answer that today, but the data will help determine. And maybe my Chief Spencer, it's like fighting a fire. How do you get ahead of it? Right? We made an assumption, and I guess I agree that the public perhaps we got relaxed, but it's also based on the leadership in our language. Go back to work, it's cool, okay. The heat from the summer may stall some things. Like, no, we missed a couple of things. We collectively, and the messaging to the people. I don't want to make this about the people, what they're not not doing. We have a responsibility in what we say and how seriously we say what we say, right? You, again, we're talking about quality of life versus life. So let's talk about this life part. My question is, should we mandate this, wearing a face mask ahead of time? Just get ahead of this. We make a local declaration, a local proclamation. I get encouraging. I get that, we're already doing that. We're already encouraging people, you guys, I appreciate this campaign, but I'm like, uh huh. And so answer that, that's one question. I got two more and I gotta yield the floor. I gotta keep going. So any one of you, should we mandate the wearing of face masks?
Well, Commissioner, I would say, first of all, the governor's executive order says that we cannot be more or less strict than that executive order that goes through the 17th. I don't have that right in front of me. I think it's around the 17th. And so that's difficult because we can't say to mandate. You know, individual businesses could choose that, but as a county or a city municipality, you know, unless you're willing to go against the governor's executive order, it's spelled out very clearly in there that you can't be more or less restrictive than that.
No, okay, I'm gonna, that's fine. You don't have to leave with that. Now, again, we won't get into federal versus state and all the political move you can do to get that done in waivers. It's okay, duly noted about the executive order. But so then, one more time, why do we have to become the data point for the governor? Just like with sheltering arm, we became his data point for him to declare, okay, now we're gonna go ahead and shelter in place. So does, do we need to be in this place? And I'm, I'm watching how we message to the public, both at the state and the local levels. And I'm like, uh huh. Right, so my second question is, okay, since we're not going to do that, which brings me to the business community, which is, I don't want to blame the young people. I don't want to blame segments of the population. I think that there's something about our business that, that, what did you tell me? Last time we talked, Lisa, it was 200 companies that were at workplace something. I won't say outbreaks or whatever, but just 200 workplaces. Now it's up to 300. And 70, what, 78, 70 odd of some of them are those. 70 plus companies have more than two people, right? And I'm like, okay, so what is public health doing regarding the businesses? Because that's the place that the 20s, the 40s, they gotta go to work. They're not the 50 plus that got retirement packages and everything else that who could sort of just kick it. They gotta grind. They gotta get out there. And it's not all just about hanging out. It's not just about us socially getting together, like, no, we gotta come in contact with people. We're social creatures by default, but we are humans. And I want to be careful that we don't paint the wrong picture about the seriousness of this. So my question becomes, and this is a serious topic, what are we doing to hold the standard with the business community? Like, I can go in a restaurant right now, in my district and say, okay, they ain't got no face masks on, no gloves, and they're serving food? And then people, and I'm like, uh huh. Now that's just one incident, it's anecdotal. It just becomes a story. But what are we doing? I know we gave immunity to businesses not to be sued if something happens in there. Well, since you don't get to get sued, you need to be absorbing that increased cost to make sure that place is clean, that you're holding a standard. So what are you doing, public health, to help block the people? In other words, okay, sure, we as the board of commissioners can override the governor. All right, we know that, we're not gonna get in trouble for that, fine. But you have the power because you are that. What are you going to do to mandate that part? And I got one more question after that.
Okay, so let's see if I can hit a few points maybe that would answer your question. First of all, in that same governor's executive order that I referenced, the current one that's in place right now, it's a 40-page document that gives guidance to every type of business in the county, in the state, for how they need to run their business. So there may be 30 different restrictions or guidelines for a restaurant or an essential business or a day camp. To be able to continue to be open, they must do this and this and this and this. And so if they are not doing those things, individuals, and we don't always know if they're not doing it or if they're not doing it consistently. But for example, the restaurant that you just identified, there are some responsibilities on the restaurant owner and also on the patrons, right, for to reduce this spread. So the restaurant is guided by that executive order in addition to their normal food service and their environmental health requirements. If somebody sees that that restaurant is not being compliant with those guidelines, they certainly can email through our website or call us and we will have an environmentalist go out and make sure that they understand what they need to do. If someone sees another type of a business, and I can tell you, we're getting these calls every week. And we're either contacting those businesses by phone or by Zoom or we're actually going out to visit them and reviewing those executive orders and those guidelines that they need to follow. On the other side of that, I will also say that I think as the average resident, we need to take some responsibility for making sure that we don't continue to transmit the virus when we go into those businesses. So it's one thing that my daughter, who's a server, right, at a restaurant, that she's required to wear a face mask and use hand sanitizer and wash hands. And they've moved their tables six feet apart. And so that, as a server, she's following those guidelines. But I will tell you that the reports that we hear are that the patrons going into those places aren't even thinking about wearing a mask in some cases. And so we realize that you certainly can't wear a mask while you're eating or drinking. But you can wear a mask when you first enter. You can wear a mask when you go into a retail shop, into a small business. And so what if we all took responsibility and said, let me do my part when I'm a shopper or a patron to wear a mask to protect those workers and those other patrons around me? And then what if we also hold those businesses to that executive order standard and make sure that they're doing what they need? I think that would go a long way to really reducing transmission.
All right, and I appreciate, obviously, Independence Day as my last question, and freedom. Freedom of citizens that, you know, don't want to be ordered, don't want to be told what to do. You know, this is my life, this is et cetera, et cetera. And I appreciate also the other side of that, which is, you know, individual responsibility and sometimes just education. You know, sometimes we get into selfishness as humanity. But the only thing about ourselves, and I get it. I get American society quite well. I appreciate that. But therein lies, with that freedom comes a certain responsibility. And if there's no implications for our actions, it has a broader societal drag. And so I'm still back to, wow, we're trying to make these things coexist. And I'm acknowledging what's being done. You're trying to balance both. So this is not, my heart is not critical. It's like, okay, you gotta do both. You gotta drive, you gotta get to economics. You cannot, yeah, get life or quality of life, but you, it's both, right? So we're trying to balance this. But and you're right, there does need to be some degree of participation from the citizens. But I don't want to do it that way. Now that exposes the whole tribe, the whole county, right, the whole nation, right? And so there's, I appreciate that, Madam Chair, in this education, which I know is going to go longer than just a couple of months. But this is, we're talking about behavioral changes, right? And it only when it hits you home that sometimes you wake up. But I'm encouraging all citizens who listen to this to think about just do your part, to try to do that. And so my last question is, do we ever think that, what is the tipping point, though? And I'm looking at the slope and I'm looking at the data. I mean, I'm that guy in the corner looking at this slope and intercept. At what point do you declare that we need to go to the next stage of like, okay, you know, code orange? I don't know what the codes are, I don't even think there are some. But at what point, for Douglas, because we gotta talk about what we're looking at. We don't want to deal the citizens their hand, like let them go along with us, educate them. Okay, what are y'all looking at? Y'all see this slope, right? This thing is hot, right? And so part of it is getting ahead of it, that we all getting out there and we're putting out the sandbags. We're helping, you know, Chief Spencer, I'm sure he could speak to like, we're trying to cut off this wildfire. And so what are we looking at by way of, how many more days do you think that we've got this rising 100 point, 10% increase, a hundred person pop? Do we get to like, we go to the next level? That's my last question. I have to yield the floor after that. Your answer, I yield after that, I'm sure, after you respond.
Thank you.
So if you, I'll remember when we first started before the pandemic and we were going through all of this. I think things are similar, but we have some additional knowledge now looking at things. And so probably one of the more frightening things is when we run out of hospital beds. And we've talked about that before. And so they do have search plans in place, but once all the metro hospitals are filled and we don't have any space to take care of people, regardless of why you come in, obviously that is a serious concern. And so that is something that we watch very closely. The hospitals have done phenomenal jobs and they do have a few quivers in their, arrows in their quiver to help things if we need to. I think one of the other things too is when we look at, you know, just society as a whole, and there are certain things that we know we need to continue to thrive, right? To economically and life, people need to work. We know that, right? How do we do that the most safely as we can? And what are those things that we need? We need schools to be open too, right? Like, we do know that we need our children to be educated and to be taken care of so that we can continue to economically drive our economies. And so those are some of the things. So as, you know, we continue to go with this, we have to take a look at, will schools be safely able to open? Right now, we're looking okay, but those numbers, it's been drastic changes just over the last few weeks. And so I hate for us to get to that, you know. One of the only things that we can do is, we can, we know we need to go out. You're right, Commissioner Robinson, we have to go out and about. We are human beings, we have sheltered already and we made our sacrifices. And we have to go out and we have to put food on our tables, right? We have to do these things. But we also, we really need to do it just as safely as possible because it's not just, you know, you getting sick. So it's you getting a whole bunch of other people potentially sick without even knowing it. And I know that most people would not do that intentionally, right? But if we don't wear our masks and stay away from each other, then, you know, at least six feet, then we can unintentionally be infecting a lot of people. And so those are the things that, you know, and it's not much, I admit. You know, having a vaccine would be great. But once again, it's all we have. But we already know that we have made some very severe sacrifices. And so I think compared to what we've already been to, it's a small thing to ask going forward, that we can please try our best, you know, we have to do what we gotta do, but we gotta do it as safely as we possibly can.
Sufficient enough, I have to yield the floor. Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you so much, Vice Chairman Robinson. And thank you so much, Dr. Me Mark and Dr. I mean, and Lisa. Board of Commissioners, any other questions? Commissioner Mitchell, I see you.
Yes, yes, I just got a couple. I'll be brief. First of all, thank you guys for a job well done and trying to get your arms around this whole pandemic. But my first question though, as we did a food drive, Tereena and myself this past Friday, this past Friday, and I know the timing was a little bit bad on the mere fact of the holidays and all that kind of good stuff. Where are we gonna have, I mean, it looks like we gotta get out there and do a lot more testing to get a lot further ahead of this thing. And even we test today and somebody go out and get contacts of some sort tomorrow. Can't totally control it. But are we looking at trying to add? I know, I think I saw in your layout, there's like four or five testing sites of some sort in Douglas County now, correct? Are we able as commissioners in our districts periodically add some sites that will be hopefully conducive to you guys' timing? And I don't know, it just, it won't be convenient, I guess, as like this past, this past Friday. But are we looking at doing that? Or is that something that we can anticipate?
Absolutely. We welcome your input because you all know the community is the best. And so the Douglas Health Center will go to capacity with testing, but we are looking to do outreach in other communities that it may be hard for them to come get tested and we need to increase capacity. So Lisa and I today will be working on another partnership. So we do have the two partnerships and we have one more. We're trying to do it maybe at least one day a week, possibly two, where they'll come out to different sites and test several hundred people. We just gotta make sure that logistically, so if you have some size, please let me and Lisa know and we will put it on our list. Because as this rolls a little quicker, we'll definitely be able to do some of that. But we appreciate your help in that.
Yes, so to add to that though, do you, I'm sorry, Lisa, do you want to add to that, I guess?
Yeah, Commissioner, I just wanted to tell you, so we have an outreach coordinator who's helping to secure these locations and work out the details. And then as Dr. Me Mark said, we have the partnership where we'll use our own staff, metroplanning, ambulance, paramedics, and also the Wellstar Congregational Nurses. And then we're working on a third, I mean, yes, a third partner. And so just what we'd like to see are, I don't want to dilute folks who could come to our Selman Drive location at our Public Health Center. So we'd like to be able to set up locations that might not be real close to that location and also where we could have 35 or more people that could be registered for testing. It's not terribly efficient, an efficient use of our staff to go out for just eight or 10 people. So we would like to see the volume be able to be served.
Well, with the food drive that Commissioner Carleton and I did, you had about 200 plus, just FYI. So the other thing, so the. So the other thing, so the offering of masks throughout the county, how is that, how do we get access to that? How do the citizens get access to that? Or is it at a particular place? Or should we put it at all churches? And I mean, this, do you have enough masks to go around?
So we've given, we just got a shipment of about 100,000 masks for our district, which keep in mind, our district is about 900,000 people, so it doesn't completely cover everybody. But what we've been trying to do is to provide those out to our nonprofits and folks who might need them for their congregations or for some of their nonprofit clients. And so I'm happy to get those out to you. Probably the best way that residents can request it is through our website, the Contact Us. That will get to us and then we'll be able to get them over to the Douglas Public Health Center for folks to pick up.
Okay, all right, because I just think most probably just don't know where to go and grab them outside of your office or something of that caliber or the hospital, but maybe all the churches and so on. But, you know, if you're working with a 501(c)(3), that's a good choice.
Right, so the other day I gave, I gave 500 to a local church that they had a large congregation and so we gave them 500 and they're gonna get them out to their congregation and that's a great solution.
Absolutely, absolutely. I think that that's great, but I just want to make sure that those that are watching the program and listening to this know kind of where they can go and grab them, whether it's a church or any other 501(c)(3), so they can kind of get access to those. My other question, though, is, okay, are we anticipating, I mean, we're already at a peak with this virus and this is now the summer. But from my understanding, I thought we were anticipating a peak somewhere now about the fall or the winter. Are we anticipating a double whammy here or not? Or am I off keel because I'm not the medical expert?
Well, your guess is gonna be as good as mine. I anticipate that with cooler weather, we should see more cases. It's kind of logically what you would anticipate. And then we throw our seasonal flu on top of that. And so that may muddy the waters a little bit for us unless something truly miraculous happens between now and, oh my gosh, September is right around the corner, then I anticipate we, and we really haven't reached the peak yet. We just continue to just rise in cases, so.
Right, so we don't really know the answer to that question?
No, we don't, but I hope a miracle comes.
Well, maybe the cure will be in time for that, though. And my last question, you know, the misnomer is, at least for some, wearing the masks are problematic, meaning, you know, it creates another problem for those that are wearing the mask. How are we gonna kind of get them, get most citizens to understand that wearing the mask is really, that's, I will call it a misnomer, but it may be something true to this, that wearing a mask, if you're asthmatic or anything of that caliber, that you could create another problem for yourself. Is that true, first of all? Is this a true problem for those that are wearing the mask to understand that it's not a problem, it's not problematic? So help me to understand and help us as citizens to understand, you know, it's better to be proactive and wear the mask versus with the possibility of what people are saying that the mask creates another problem for you as an individual.
So I, you know, I don't like to use blanket, you know, guidance for everybody. There may be people that feel like it is really truly intolerable to have the mask on that's tight fitting and it could be, it's not just medical conditions, but it could be things like even having claustrophobia anxiety or something like that. But if you have a form of severe asthma, respiratory condition, it could make it a little bit more difficult. There are some other options that you could try, something a little bit looser fitting. I know it's not, you know, it's not gonna be 100% effective, but at least it's something. If you work or stuff like that, there's face shields that can be used. You can try something like that that will help some. But that should be very, very kind of few and far between people that have trouble with that. We had mentioned the children under age two and people who have mental difficulties or physical difficulties that cannot take it on and off, they really shouldn't be wearing one independently. So there are some caveats to that, but that should be very rare, I would think.
Commissioner, I do think one of the challenges we're facing is that, you know, in this age of social media and access to a wide variety of information at our fingertips, it's really easy to get information that's inaccurate but sounds accurate, right? Everybody's trying their very best to get accurate information and sometimes it's hard to know if that's appropriate. I would say, one, make sure that the residents are looking at credible resources for the information, like the CDC, World Health Organization, Cobb and Douglas Public Health, Georgia Department of Public Health, for the information about the efficacy of masks and the risks. Because it's really, I saw something the other day on a family member's post that had a whole list of reasons why it was hazardous to wear a mask and it just wasn't accurate. And so I think everybody has the best of intentions. I really believe that about people. They just, it's hard to make sure what your information, that your information's accurate. So if that, people will go to those primary sources, I think that we'll be in better shape.
Well, I think that's gonna be a fight that we all will have to conquer because at the end of the day, I understand the importance of wearing the mask and shields and any and everything to be preventive. However, you've got that, and I've read some of those posts that have these astronomical reasoning as to why you shouldn't, you know? But I just can't seem to pull out 1% of that to be accurate. But at the end of the day, I'll leave it.
I guess I would, I would reference Dr. Jackson Jones and Dr. Memark and others who were maybe listening to this and say that for centuries, right, medical folks have worn masks all day long without being, having their health at risk. And I would expect, right, that if you had a group of physicians and nurses who were having hazardous health outcomes because of wearing a mask, we would have heard about that issue long before now.
I would agree, I would agree. But I just know that's gonna be a task that we all will face in trying to get people to understand the importance of doing this versus not doing this and all the conspiracy theorists who decide to say a lot of other things. So I'll yield back and I'll leave it at that. Thank you again. I yield back, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mitchell and Commissioner Carleton, I see you. You, okay, Commissioner Carleton.
Thank you. Very quickly, two questions. One, can you talk about the difference between wearing the face shield versus face mask? And two, please think about walk-up sites versus drive-up sites because everybody does not have a car. Those are my only two questions. Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I yield the floor.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Carleton. So the idea is that for everybody to wear a, you know, fitted facial mask. And so there are several different ones. You can do the surgical mask, which are, which have some very good efficacy for those. But you can do at least a two ply mask of just fabric and those are helpful as well. If you decide to wear a face shield, which is additional protection, you are supposed to be wearing the, some sort of cloth covering or facial covering with the shield for additional protection. So for example, that's kind of like the highest of the highest. So our drive-through employees that constantly have people that are, they're in their, you know, realm when they're testing, will wear both the shield and the mask and one of the N95s because we really need them and we don't need them to get exposed to COVID-19. So if you can, wear both, that is really the best recommendation to do that. If you are, so we had talked about, if you're really that sick that you can't wear them, I would really think twice before leaving your house and going to public places without being able to wear either of those. You're putting yourself at very exceptional risk and we are seeing of the deaths and hospitalizations, people who are having heart conditions or have any lung conditions or immunocompromised are the ones that are greatest risk of having some trouble from COVID-19. So I would think about that. And you're absolutely right, we are working on different places. So the outreach, I don't think it has to be drive-through and even our locations, you can walk up and they try, if they see that you're not in a car, they can try to get you over a little sooner so that you're not waiting in the elements. But that's definitely one of the outreach priorities we have is looking for places where people don't have to drive through because you're right, that is a social determinant of health and if you can't drive, then you may not get tested. So we're making sure that we're very aware of that, but thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Guyder. I believe you have one more coming and then we're gonna move on.
Yes, I just want to segue off of Commissioner Mitchell's remarks. You know, Ephesus Baptist Church, they are on the western, far western side of the county and they are having a drive-through pantry this Wednesday from three to five. But I just wonder, I noticed that you had New Mountain Top as a place for testing. Have you reached out to other pastors? Why can't we do both on the same day? Have the testing, because most churches have a very large parking lot and if we could do some of the testing or at least give the churches something to hand out in their pantry packages or boxes, notify people where they can be tested. So we can kind of use a lot of this. Also Midway Church, I think it's Midway Church, that does a pantry several times a month also. So we have a way of reaching a lot of people that may not otherwise know about the testing. So we might want to utilize both.
Commissioner, we're meeting, we have an open Zoom every two weeks with our district pastors and congregation folks where we're talking about issues that they're facing as they're trying to reopen. We also offer the testing option at that point, too. But certainly if anybody has an interest in having us come test at their, in their church parking lot or during a pantry, a couple of ways. One, if you want to send that to me, that's great. But if they want to reach out to us through our cobbandouglaspublichealth.org website under Contact Us, we're happy to respond and look to see if we can do those. There isn't a reason why we couldn't do multiple locations. We just have to staff it in advance and we have to do it far enough in advance that people can have time to pre-register on our site so that we have all the labels printed for the actual specimen collection.
But is there a flyer that they could be handing out in their packages notifying people where they could be tested?
Yes, I think we, and I'll check again, but I think we have sent that testing flyer. It's on our website. It's also, I think we've sent it to Rick Martin and I believe it's on the Douglas website. Folks are welcome to print those off and put, give them out or post them while they're doing these pantries.
All right, thank you. Now you're back.
Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you, this, thank you, Dr. Memark and also Lisa for coming out this morning. We appreciate your time. This is well worth it for our Board of Commissioners and also for our citizens. This is critical and we are at a point that we want to make sure that this educational campaign is effective. And certainly I would like to just say Douglas County has kicked off again with something that is promising for our citizens and hopefully, you know, we are not at the point of mandating, but we are at the point of changing behavior. And it takes a while and I was just sharing with one of our commissioners that when you first, particularly me, is when I first started working in surgery, you forget about the mask. You walk in the room and then everybody pointed at you and said, they hold you accountable and say, you forgot your mask. And then you come out. So and as I taught students, about 150 students, which are surgical technologists here in the state of Georgia, they have to do the same thing. So it's like, it just takes a minute. It's like riding a bike. Once you ride your bike, you will just realize that you need your mask. So I thank you so much, Board of Commissioners, for supporting this effort, this educational campaign and we'll see how it plays out. And I'm quite sure as the days go on in the state of Georgia, certainly our governor may reconsider and add, but right now we can't supersede his orders. All right, thank you all so much. And we're gonna move on to our next item, which is our COVID-19 grant update. And I do want, before the county administrator is gonna bring this update to us, I wanted to just share.
Sorry, Madam Chair, go.
Say that again.
Go ahead, Madam Chair.
Okay, no, I wanted to, Mark is gonna provide, Mark Till, our county administrator, will be providing the update. Actually, he has two updates back to back. But I just wanted to just share about the, this campaign, the educational campaign. There was some, I believe, some questions out there, how is this campaign gonna be funded? Certainly with our COVID-19 funds, which is the CARES Act, which is federal government, they're asking all of us to do what we can. So this is COVID related, so citizens, those ones that have questions, this campaign has, certainly I know, I'm like you, I'm very sensitive about my tax dollars, but this is federal government tax dollars that are coming to help support and teach and educate our citizens and not only the citizens here in Douglas County, but the state of Georgia, the nation and the globe. So Mark, I yield to you, thank you, you have two presentations this morning.
Yes, ma'am. As far as the CARES Act, the funding is, we were notified about a week ago, funding will be based on population. Looks like we'll receive 1.661 million upfront, up to 5.5 million. And these are for necessary expenditures related to the public health emergency. Additional details will be provided by the state. They will also be sending us information on the web portal for us to be able to log on and receive these funds. We've actually already given them, this was a couple of months ago, all of our financial information. So we're waiting on that. We expect to hear something very soon, next couple of days. And it's our understanding at this time, although additional information, like I said, will be provided by the state, that these expenditures include but are not limited to all the items that were included in the resolution approved by the board, which included hazard pay and numerous other items. I think that was 900,000 we had allocated in the resolution. All the COVID-19 expenses that we've been tracking, the departments have spent and then also possibly help for some of the small businesses. And this is for the CARES Act and pretty much that's all I have right now, Madam Chair. Any questions?
Well, I just want to make sure the Board of Commissioners knew that Tiffany Stewart-Staley has a more elaborate, should I say, presentation for us, but she couldn't be here this morning. So I just asked Mark to give you the abbreviated approach. And I see you, Commissioner Guyder, your hand is up.
Okay, Mark, you said that it was gonna be based on population. Now, DCA puts out populations in between the census. Is this gonna be based on the last census almost 10 years ago or is it gonna be based on the current population per DCA?
I'm not sure. I know they have already allocated the money. So it's at 1.66 million up to 5.5 and they were based on population. I'm not sure which population they used.
So we could back into that population, I guess.
Yes, I'll check into it and let you know.
Because DCA has a more current population rather than relying on the past census that was taken 10 years ago. So it could make a big difference, so. Thank you. You're back.
Okay. And any other questions from the Board of Commissioners? And I saw your hand. Okay, I hear yes, but I don't see your face. Is it Commissioner Robinson? Did I hear your voice?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, there you are, okay.
Am I on? Okay, all right, yep, I got it. Real quick and to the county administrator, so how much money, and again, this is gonna be a segue into our conversation probably a little bit later with our financial advisor, but this is a standalone topic, which is, how much money have we spent so far on related?
I do not have that exact number. Is my couple hundred thousand in there?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mark, this is David Corbin.
Yeah, we spent a couple hundred thousand through all the departments and then I think we spent 500 and something thousand on the hazard pay and we had some more expenses associated with the resolution, but I don't have the exact number in front of me now.
All right, and here's where, and again, this is not a hard question or a slider. One point, what'd you say, 1.6 million?
Yeah, 1.66 million upfront and then up to 5.5 million.
Ken, Madam Chair, I believe early on, our delegation asked a question directly to you, how much do we anticipate that we may need at the very beginning of this? And I know you and I had the conversation, we're somewhere between 1 and 2 million. It's like we, we, I mean, we had nothing to go on. We had no data, but we anticipated, obviously, this is right smack dab in the middle of the fairway at 1.6. But my question becomes, okay, are we having a lot of, I mean, we get up to 5 million dollars. What is our projection? And I, I'm just not hearing what I need to hear. And David, maybe you'll answer this later, so we don't have, you know, aside, we don't have to hijack this moment. But I'm trying to get a feel for like, okay, guys, this is not over. This COVID is not over. Now we've got some cash that's coming in to help us cover some of these costs. Lay out to me what my expense plan is gonna be with COVID-only related. It's great that you got access to a line of credit. It's up to, I, I get that. But I'm like, well, what is the real need? And I haven't heard that yet, and I know we're working on that, and I'm sure we're gonna get to that. But David, will you cover that later in a little bit more detail? We don't, again, we've got another item coming up. Will you cover that later? Can you answer that question?
I will try, I will try to answer that question.
Okay. But ma'am chair, let's let it be. I'm fine. I'll come back to it later. I yield. I'm fine.
Thank you so much. And David Corbin, Mr. Corbin, you look like you wanted to say something, and I'm gonna move on, but do you have some?
I just wanted to make sure, a little bit piggybacking on what Vice Chair Robinson stated. These are reimbursable expenses, right? So, you know, I just wanna make sure the finance department has a pretty good grip on accounting for those expenses, because those ultimately have to be reported back to the state and corresponding to the federal government. So they're, they're almost treated as grant monies. So I wanna make sure that everyone understands they're reimbursable expenses directly, and we have to account for them very specifically and very appropriately. That's all.
Yep. Yeah, and we are doing that. Finance is tracking every department's expenses. So they're submitting those to us through a spreadsheet monthly, and we're tracking the expenses from the, from the resolution that was approved by the board.
Yes. Okay. All right, if there are no other questions for you, Mark, regarding this topic, we're gonna move on to the next item. Reopening of the Boundary Waters Aquatic Center Parks and Recreation Measures and the Waiver Requirements. Mark, if you could just highlight those for us this morning.
Yes, ma'am. So I'll try to pull up, see if I can share this PowerPoint. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Ma'am Chair, you see that?
Yes, we can see it.
Okay, so as far as parks and recreation, so all the trails are open. The disc golf courses are open. We opened those a couple of weeks ago. Boundary Waters Aquatic Center, I think, opened up on the 29th. So as far as the aquatic center reopening, so it's eight o'clock to five. And then they close it from 10:30 to 12:00 daily to clean and disinfect. You have a maximum of 11 people that are allowed in the pool at one time. One person per lane with a 45-minute maximum usage time. And then lanes must be reserved in advance. And we have no land or water fitness classes offered during this Phase One reopening. All patrons must follow social distancing, the guidelines set forth by the Health Department and the CDC. We're checking temperatures of everyone who comes in the building, employees and citizens or patrons. And we have plenty of signage posted as far as social distancing. Make sure you don't come in if you have any of the, the symptoms of the coronavirus. Masks are required to be worn by patrons, except for in the pool. Yeah, we're not requiring them in the pool. And we have hand sanitizer available. Staff wears masks, and protective shields have been installed at the front desk. And then any before using the facility, that essentially holds the county harmless for any exposure to COVID-19. The locker rooms are closed at this time. The restrooms at the front of the facility will be open. As far as parks, athletics, and recreation, like I said before, we've already opened up the walking tracks, the trails. And then, so that includes Boundary Waters, Clinton, Deer Lake Park, Dog River, Fair Play, and Woodrow Wilson Park. So the hours are eight o'clock AM until dark. These were affected June 26, 2020. So the restrooms were opened. They're cleaned and sanitized by parks maintenance staff three times daily. And then the 29th, we opened the athletic fields for small groups and practice and individual usage, each association. So they're required to submit a facility agreement form to reserve field space for one hour. Only one team at a time. Parents must sign a waiver. And then security officers are patrolling these practice fields to ensure that the users have obtained permits and signed waivers. Currently, the Deer Lake Activity Center Sports Complex Buildings, pavigons, and playgrounds remain closed. And then the summer camp program and sports camps have been canceled. As far as the Douglas County Transportation Center, so we opened back up on June 22nd. Same thing with temperature checks. So we provided thermometers for every facility in the county. The ones that are open and not open, so that we're prepared whenever we do open. So we're checking temperatures of every employee when they come in the building, and then any patrons of the building, when they come in, we're checking, checking those. If we have to meet with members of the public, we're conducting that in the lobby. So we're keeping our social distancing and appointments requested from the public. And then front counter staff is protected by the large glass shield, and the building is wiped down and cleaned frequently and sanitized weekly. And those are just a couple of pictures, some of the signage that's installed in all county buildings. As far as libraries, libraries plan to be open July 7th, which is today. No, tomorrow, sorry. Today's the 6th, so they're closed on Monday. So they're open Tuesdays from nine to six, Wednesdays they're closed for cleaning, and they're open Thursday and Friday from nine, well, Thursday nine to six, Friday nine to four. And then Saturday and Sunday, they're closed. So they have plexiglass barriers at the, the front desks. Temperatures are checked from staff and citizens coming into the building. So they clean high traffic areas hourly, and they limit the amount of people in the building according to the guidelines set forth by the governor and his executive order. And then all staff are wearing masks, and we're strongly encouraging citizens to wear masks as well. Maintain social distance at all times. And then curbside services are also still available. Some services are temporarily unavailable, public computers. Printing can be done wirelessly. Study rooms and meeting rooms will also be unavailable, and storytimes and other in-house programs are not open at this time. So those are the three areas, parks and Douglas County Libraries and Connect Douglas. So are there any questions on these openings?
Mark, thank you so much. Certainly, I appreciate what, and I know the Board of Commissioners appreciate as well, which is the plexiglass is being placed throughout the entire county, not in just those areas you just mentioned, and then also the Tax Commissioner's Office as well. So we appreciate the extra layer of protection. Also, we have about 200,000 masks that have come in, Mark. If you could just chime in about those masks and where those masks, what locations are those masks would be placed throughout the county, cloth masks.
Yeah, so we're checking for, we're checking with GEMA currently, and we're waiting to hear back from them on the, the conditions or requirements as far as who we can provide those masks to. But we plan to have those as long as we get to go ahead from GEMA at all county facilities that are open. So Parks and Rec facilities, Connect Douglas, the libraries, courthouse. So as many locations as possible. And we'll notify the public as far as when that happens, and it should be, I expect it to happen this week, as soon as we get confirmation from GEMA. Yeah, we did get about 20,000 masks.
Okay. Thank you so much. And also, Board of Commissioners, we certainly mandated masks. I have, and given an order to, to, along with our emergency management team, to mandate all employees wear masks in our government facilities, unless it's certainly in the hallways, the vestibules, and things like that, elevators, you have to have a mask. And in your own private offices, you, the employees are allowed to wear masks. I mean, highly encouraging whoever's in those public, government, governmental buildings to wear a mask. So that's very important. And I realize when you swim, you cannot wear one, but certainly when you're talking and chatting and sitting around on the sidelines, you need to have a mask on. So that's very, very important at this time. Any questions from the Board of Commissioners regarding this presentation? Okay.
Yes.
Commissioner Robinson, I'm beginning to learn, I don't see your face. Vice Chairman.
That's okay. That's fine. And I might have missed this part, and maybe it's another part of the agenda about the indoor facilities and programming. Are we gonna come to that later? Or, programming, this is probably for our Parks and Rec Committee. I'm trying to get a feel for, we're emphasizing the aquatic center, but there's different elements within our community that want access to their tax dollars. And so, you know, we've gone through half the summer already, about to get back. And I'm thinking that we're, there's a need for outlets. We've got these assets that are sitting here, and we're just choosing to not address them. We're choosing not to. Now we've got 1.6 million, up to 5 million dollars. Why can't we clean those facilities quite often now to allow citizens, the youth, to access them? Yet we want them to go to school, but I'm, I'm looking for consistency of policy. Like, be consistent. You're gonna give access to that, give access to everything. You've got a solution that allows a consistent application of policy. Now here's citizens, what about us that don't swim that wanna do this? And we're, it's almost like, well, it doesn't matter, we're just not gonna, we're not gonna deal with that. And I, and I, I'm, I'm asking, and this is more for rhetorical. The citizens weigh in on this. This, I don't debate this, I just listen. And it's more of a, hmm. What about everybody else? Yes, it may be risk, but the very thing we're talking about, well, we gotta go back to school. You gotta go back to work. Well, why can't they also have that opportunity? And I get the social distancing, but I, I don't wanna create a false enemy, a false foe. The foe is not that, the foe is the bug. As long as we can be sensitive, we wash our hands, we hand sanitizer. I mean, I've looked at other models, other churches, other places that are doing this right now, where they allow them. They clean every two hours, they put hand sanitizers every 20 minutes. I'm, I'm just, I'm not hearing the other parts of the plan. I'm, I'm hearing the convenient part of the plan that we can rationalize, but I'm not hearing, like, well, what about everything else? Right? And those people like, well, my tax dollars, I mean, I get that their tax dollar goes to that, and they get to get that benefit, and I have no problem with that. But what my interests are is this part. And I haven't heard the, the, it's important. That outlet is important, right? We have a responsibility as, you know, the reason you have a Parks and Rec Department is to have an outlet. That society ain't all about being a sheep or being out there working and stuff and being a battery for the system. We provide outlets for them, right? And we have these assets that are here. And I know we're smart enough to come up with a program that allows us to allow them to participate. Now, I heard something about waivers and different things. I'm, I'm not trying to design a solution, only to create the moment that says, okay, guys, we're, we're talking impartiality. We're like, we're, okay, but what's the full plan? And maybe you guys have that, and that's why I wanna be sensitive. I will yield with this statement, that's about two minutes. I'll yield with this is, is, does Park, either the administration or does the Parks and Rec Committee have a recommendation to the administration? For the Board of Commissioners to consider the whole thing, not just this one part. Because citizens, I'm getting the call, says, well, what about this? Well, what about this? And it's like, well, it's not, we're not addressing it. It's almost like, well, we're not gonna take that up. And I'm like, well, in the history of this county, you've never not had, I get the pandemic, but why are we being convenient with this one versus that one? Why can't we come up with a solution? So if we're not ready to address that right now, I'm okay. I just, I have to put it out there. Because again, I'm just oversight. I'm not day-to-day, I'm not trying to be day-to-day. But I'm, I'm advocating for the interest of citizens who say, well, wait a minute, I don't want all summer. I wanna, I, I need something that, that, that recreation is important. We wanna give people outlets. I mean, I see the spike in divorce, I see the spike in domestic violence. I see the spike of standing, like, no, y'all not putting all that data together. We're sort of overlooking this, like, okay, that's an important element, is giving them outlets. And we're the key to that. They use their tax dollars, we're the keys to that. And yet, we're just sort of not helping with that as if it didn't matter. I want, I don't even wanna respond. I want y'all to think about what we've done and what we're not doing regarding that, like, as if it didn't matter. I yield floor. Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
So, ma'am chair and commissioners, so we have looked. We're tracking what other counties are doing, what the school systems are doing. So right now, it's recommended that a slow roll opening. And so the things that we have opened are some of the things that can open and still be, have social distancing apply, because mass gatherings are still limited, you know, especially in light of the spike that we've recently seen with the cases from the coronavirus.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Mitchell, I see you. You wanna?
Yeah, I just, I just wanna chime in, ma'am chair. Just, and those should be very brief to answer Vice Chairman Robinson's comments in reference to the committee having any input on whether or not this was the rollout, whether or not it was the plan, or was it even the recommendation? No input on that, Vice Chair Robinson. And you two and I have actually received, and I can't speak for the other commissioners, several comments about what we should or shouldn't do, how we should do it or how we shouldn't do it. But this particular rollout was strictly, I guess, through staff and/or ma'am chair, so I'm not sure. Just those comments and those comments alone. I yield back.
All right. Thank you so much, Commissioner Mitchell. And certainly, we are following those, those measures that are certainly built in, baked into the governor's orders, and working closely with public health as we open these areas, and certainly wanna be sensitive to that, and I'm sensitive to the needs of our citizens, but I'm very sensitive to their health as well. So certainly someone who has a background in health, I would be, it would be ludicrous for me to open the whole place up realizing what's going on. So we're, we are, we've been very, we've been measuring and looking at other places to see what they're doing. We have allowed those teams, but in the small groups, to come back and play baseball and things like that. But still, again, it's contact, it's very difficult to maintain that six-feet distance. Lisa, if you could chime in, I know you've been working with us, and you've been helping us as much as possible. We have not made a move without public health. So if you could just chime in briefly.
Sure. So the first thing I would say is that I've been so impressed by the staff, by Mark and Jason and all of the staff, of being so purposeful and thoughtful and consistent with the governor's executive order. Because, you know, just because we're county government doesn't mean that we're not subject to like the day camp or the summer camp or the parks openings. And so it is certainly a balance to come, to look at the executive order and translate that to concrete practice, and then also to look at the health status of the community and filter that in. So I'm very supportive of the slow roll that Mark mentioned, the slow roll that you all have taken to start to see, yes, let's open up these things, and let's see how that goes. And if we can, and if folks are doing what they need to do while they're participating in those activities, then it makes you more confident to go, all right, let's take the next step and reopen. And then you, before you take the next step, you also look at the health status of the community and see where things stand. So I think this is a really good start. I'm hopeful as well that over the next month or two, that we'll be able to open up more things. I am really struggling not going back to my Parks and Rec activities, because, you know, I'm in the group fitness exercise activities as well, and it's just not the time for that, considering the nature of a lot of those events or activities.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you so much, Lisa. And we're gonna move on, Board of Commissioners, if there are no other comments. We're gonna move on to Financial Risk Analysis Presentation. We have David Corbin here this morning, and Matthew Arrington from Terminus. You have the floor, David Corbin.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Yeah, I think I'll try to keep my comments fairly brief. I also have my colleague, Shmik, stored on the line as well. This conversation really piggybacks off of a finance committee meeting we had, I guess, several weeks ago where the county, under, under y'all's leadership, have asked us to work with staff to develop a financial model or at least a, a platform and protocol to keep up with various revenues and expenses that are being impacted by COVID-19 and to try to put together some short-term outlook. I mean, I think heretofore, we've spent a great deal of time producing long-term capital plans, five-year outlooks, budgetary measures and policy initiatives. We sort of, because of COVID-19, started, Commissioner Robinson and many of you wanted us to, to reverse that trend and look at what the budget would look like day to day, given the impact of COVID. And based on a lot of what I've been hearing today from your health officials, our process is not too dissimilar. I mean, we are trying to figure out on a regular basis which way the market is moving with regard to your financial status. Basically, we do think, to sum it all up, that there will be a decline in 2020 projected revenues. You had a 90, roughly a $97.7 million revenue projection in 2020. We think that number is going to be down by three to 5% at this point in time, even with the reopenings. And you had 102 million roughly. That was, that would have been budgeted to cover projected expenditures, expenditures this year. And, you know, we've already gone above, you know, assuming that we spend that, that amount of money, you know, on top of some of the COVID-related items, which are now going to be reimbursed to some degree. We still think that there's going to be significant stress on your undesigned funded balance as we move forward. And so what we're trying to do is be mindful of the things that are, that are taking place. We've had independent calls with the Tax Commissioner, their office, in terms of all your sources of revenues. We've had calls with economic development. The digest is now coming. I think that data may be in, Mark may be able to comment on that. I think that the digest values are expected this week if they haven't already come in. We're now looking at that. And we're trying to keep up with what is happening in real time as we get the data to make sure you have it so that you can make informed decisions. And at that, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Robinson or Madam Chair, whoever may have questions regarding the specifics of where we think you are or anything else that may come up that we want to talk about.
Okay. Thank you so much. Commissioner Robinson certainly is the, and the Vice Chairman of the Board of Commissioners and the Chairman of this, of our Finance Committee. Do you have anything you want to weigh in with first?
May I go?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, this, to the citizens of Douglas County and the full Board of Commissioners, as David Corbin mentioned, this is, this presentation, this highlight presentation is an output of our last Finance Committee. It is the exact same presentation that was given to the Finance Committee without alteration. That's been a commitment of our Finance Committee, which is to make sure that you guys have consistent information as, as I do, as Madam Chair does, as we make major decisions. As you guys know, we came into the 2020 budget cycle with a certain set of assumptions. The pandemic obviously threw a serious curve ball. All bets are off. We, as David Corbin earlier shared, sort of began to help us assess our outlook. We need to revisit things. And that is the intent to do so. After this, obviously, we'll be going into our mid-year budget retreat where we have to sit down and, and look at things for what they are. Do we need to make any material adjustments or not? But we are looking at not just for the next six months, but again, the goal is look at like an 18-month window. That's always been the goal. Go pull any tape. It was to bridge our current status with the future. Right? It's, it's one thing, we can, we, we can hope for the best, but y'all should plan for the worst. You land somewhere in the middle, and I'm always that guy about to fare away. Up until this point, I, I have no additional data other than the last, David answered the question and, and I'll, I'll move into it, let my peers speak. This, what you've done, this stress testing that you've done, how far have you done it through? Through May or through June? Probably just May, right?
No, I think, I think, Shmik, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we, we recently updated, at least the COVID numbers are updated through June. Is that correct, Shmik?
COVID numbers are updated through the end of May, through May 30. Yeah, we haven't June's information as yet.
Okay.
All right. So, all right. So, and, and so with that being said, 102 expenses, 97 million revenue, three to 5% correction, that was eight million? Did I do that right?
Yeah, you're, you're gonna, you're gonna be in that, in that range, have some balance between the two. There's definitely gonna be, there's a structural imbalance right now. So assuming that you, assuming that you spend 102 million, I think that's a safe bet. It's not, again, you're, you've, you've budgeted, you've had a supplemental budget, which you've budgeted more than the original 102.
Yep.
Historically, the county has, has come in at two to 3% under that number historically. You're going to get reimbursed for some of the COVID-related expenses that you have. So we think you're going to come in on target right now on the, on the budgeted revenues at 102, roughly 102. But it's the revenue decline, all right? It's the revenue decline that we're looking at that's problematic right now.
Which is consistent with our, our actuarial guy last year, our auditor, who, who spoke to us and says that obviously it is declining. So we, that, that's not new, but now it's more real six months later. That being said, I'm gonna, so with an eight, eight million dollars, we know the market is soft. We know that Congress has done a job to try to float us, meaning collectively, either direct payments to individuals or to do, obviously, local contributions by giving people relief, PPP, you name it. Notwithstanding anything we've done locally, other than we as the government have done some cost savings within, and, and I'm sure, I'm sure your staff, Mark, can speak to some of the cost savings that have been done up until this point. We've got an eight million dollar variance and we've done some things to sort of shore that up. But the goal is, David, is that you will have some options for us going into our mid-year retreat once we get the full digest in from Benny and the Tax Commissioner, that we'll have a robust conversation. Is that the end goal?
The goal is to provide you with those alternatives.
Correct. Is Jennifer Hallman on the phone? Madam Chair, may I speak to Jennifer Hallman?
Yes, if she's.
Commissioner Robinson is. Jennifer's out sick today.
Oh, boy. Okay. We'll keep it moving. Can you speak to, I, I just had a general question, but we are prepared to speak to the full Board of Commissioners during the mid-year budget retreat. Do we know when that date has been set?
We do not yet. I think we're still waiting on the digest and we're not sure if with the Board of, Department of Education, with them having to kind of pause theirs, if that's holding our digest up or not.
Can we get an answer to that? Is Ken Bernard on the phone? Somebody, I, I need to know specifically what our end dates are so we can make sure that we don't miss our numbers. I get the Board of Education is a separate entity, but yet at the end of the day, what does that mean for us? So that we can plan, what I don't want to do is shotgun the Board of Commissioners with a financial decision based on some timeframe that all of a sudden we just now realize, oh, it's due tomorrow. Can you guys, please?
I know Jennifer's reached out to Benny and Mr. Baker, and we can do that again to see kind of where they stand. Because that's just what we're waiting on. Once we get that, we can set a date.
Okay. All right, Madam Chair, I yield. This is for the Board of Commissioners. It's just a repeat of our Finance Committee, so I yield now.
Okay. Mark, if you could, could you just share with the Board of Commissioners some of those expense reductions and approach that we've taken?
Madam Chair, I'm on, I'm on the line. Disconnect for a second if you need to.
Okay. Thank you, Ken. Mark, if you could just share.
Commissioner Robinson, I'm sorry, it broke up right when I went to hit the mute button. But I think your question is, when do we have to have our numbers for purposes of the digest and for the military rate? Is that what I understood the question?
That's correct.
Yeah. I, I, I think that those, if you count back from, usually the digest is closed and David or Mark can correct me if I'm wrong. I want to say at the end of July, it typically closes subject to appeals. And usually we have some meeting between now and end of August, first or September for purposes of publishing the military rate after we get it from the school board and related entities that goes on there. It's a little off, off, as you know, because the digest closes while we're actually in a budget cycle year already. But usually that, the, the time for adoption of the military rate is late summer, early fall so that the bills can go out timely and be due on November 15th. Mark, is that right?
Yes.
Yes. Well, we should find out. We were hoping to find out by the end of last week, first part of this week, the digest hopefully will be completed by the Tax Commissioner and the appraisal department. So once we have the digest, then we will work on setting the date for the mid-year retreat. So we're on track, we're on schedule to have it either on or before when we have the past couple of years. So right now we're on schedule.
All right. And again, just before you get into the details of that.
I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, Madam Chair. Yeah, to, to that point, if there's a delay in the digest for whatever reason, and specifically the Board of Education, which this is not a, a bad thing. It's, it's, it's a function of reality. If we delay two weeks or 30 days, whatever reason, that means that the revenue that we'll be collecting at the end of the year will be delayed by 30 days. My question, and, and obviously it's, it's a domino effect. One more time, the financial model that we're creating, back to David Corbin, is our model that you're creating for us allows us to anticipate sensitivity analysis, say, okay, guys, we, we, we can't be linear in structure. Y'all know how this works, right? And it's something that we can't, we can't control. We're not in control of this part. So how flexible are you being able to outlook, to be able to move numbers to say that, okay, well, if this comes in, I think you know what I'm asking. Can you answer that, please?
Yeah. So, so the model will support any variation in, in revenue collection. I don't think, it's, it's been, it's been set up. Right now, we've obviously made the assumption that revenues are going to come in at an appropriate time. We've asked the Tax Commissioner, we've asked Benny, we've made some assumptions. So those assumptions can change. All right? Those assumptions can change. And we are prepared to incorporate those in. And when we have that retreat, we'll have those laid out for you at that point. I think we'll have a clearer picture by that point in time.
It's week by week, I understand. Madam Chair, I yield. Thank you. Yep.
Okay. I have a quick question before I ask Mark to provide his update regarding our reduction in expenses. David, certainly we had a surprise in the month of, I believe, May or even, yeah, June. Where the expenses both lost was great. You know, we were at the same amount that we were last year and also our lost numbers came in. So I know initially we were projecting a 20% loss in revenues and then it moved to 11. So is that where you're getting your 3% from today? Is that, did that have an impact?
You know, I, as much as, yeah, Madam Chair, that's a good question. As much as I try, you know, it's almost like watching a kettle boil. I, I, you know, as much as we try to look at numbers on sometimes a weekly, even a monthly basis as they come in, we still have to keep that in context with the bigger picture, which is you had 90 days here roughly of almost no activity. All right? And so if we do just as, if we do just as well as you did the prior year, that's still from our perspective, but from a global perspective, that means you would have lost approximately about 5% of your revenue. If you match what you did last year, revenue for dollar for dollar, that means you're still, because we had projected originally, the assumption in the budget for 2020 was an increase of about $5 million in revenue that we're not, we're not seeing that increase. So for, you know, I just want to make sure we're, we're comparing apples to apples. If we can get back to 19 revenue, that's great. But we projected not just 19, we projected 5 million above 19 that I'm not sure we're going to quite get to this year.
Right. Okay. Thank you so much. And Mark, if you could just share with this, you know, with the, first of all, the Board of Commissioners and then the citizens about those expense reductions that we attacked very early on to see what we could do to just take some pressure off the reduction of those expenses that were projected to come in. Mark, you have the floor.
Yes, ma'am. So a couple of months ago, we put a hold on all hiring of vacancies and new positions. That excluded public safety. And then we had to open up, allow some of those here lately because of the opening of the Aquatic Center and, you know, some other, some other items. But so any non-essential vacancies, we have, we're not hiring for those. And then also as far as expenses, so any non-essential expenses. So we're watching all those as people submit requisitions. And if it's something that we can get by without right now, then we don't approve those. So we've cut down non-essential expenses and hiring of vacancies.
And certainly if you could just chat, chat about the cash flows have been better than expected. So we're still, again, just holding. And if, if you could, for our Finance Meeting, Mark would like to see if you all could quantify those expenses that we've been able to hold off in terms of savings, what, what they look like. And again, as I mentioned in our last meeting, I'm, I'm optimistic that our constitutional officers and our elected officials and our staff, should I say, our directors will work with us on continuing to maintain that shift in reduction of expenses throughout the entire year, because it seems like COVID-19 is not going anywhere. So our model for this year will change and hopefully that will have an impact on your outcomes and your, your, your model, Mr. Corbin. So.
Yeah, let me, let me just add, I, I think the best way to say this is, I think under, under the collective leadership of the Administration and staff, y'all have taken some initial appropriate steps to, to address the, the expense issue in a manner that I think is, is justified. The issue really is, is, you know, the decline in revenue because of COVID-related issues, right? Is, is bigger than the expense that you're, you're, you're attempting to cut. And at some point, the government has to provide services 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And there's only so much at some level that you can cut and get down to. It's the, it's the revenue side right now that's really what we can't control.
Right.
And, and that decline is out, it's just, that is happening at a rate faster than what you can, you can probably cut at this point to, to provide the same level of services to, to, that you need to provide in the community.
Right. And I, I guess on a good note, the, with the rate being so exponentially, it's, it's not only related to just Douglas County, it's, it's all across the entire globe, sort of the nation. Certainly it puts us in a position to be able to just say, this is something beyond, out of our control and nothing that was done intentional. So again, thank you, and we look forward to a great report coming up soon. Mr. Corbin, I appreciate you and Terminus and all the great work you do to support us.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna move on. Yep. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Guyder. I'm sorry.
While we have Mr. Corbin on, on the line, you are kind of trying to tell us that we've got to cut expenditures.
Background noise, Madam Chair.
Yep.
Yeah, I couldn't hear.
Please, they can't, they can't increase the revenues that we've lost. But we're gonna have to, are you working with the Chairman and the Finance Committee about expenditures that we could cut at this time that was approved in the budget? Are, are you on board with the Chairman and the Finance Committee and the County Manager on what we could cut for this year?
So, so that, I, you know, thank you for your question, Commissioner Guyder. I think our goal of the next, between now and the, and the retreat is to get together with the, the staff, get together with, with Madam Chair and, and Vice Chair Robinson to talk about the complete picture, because there are really two sides to it, right? We can look at cutting expenditures. We can look at cutting expenditures, but the only thing I take, I take, uh, maybe issue with is you, you do have some, there are certain controls that you do have on the revenue side. It may not be related to sales taxes, but you have the ability to raise some revenue. Uh, so it's going to be some combination. Your options, I would be remiss if I told you that your only option was to cut. You also have options to raise revenue to some degree. I'm not saying that you want to do that. It has to be done in balance and our goal will be to give you a matrix of those combinations of cost-cutting measures and, and revenue, and revenue-based, um, options that you have at your disposal to move on, to, to, to deal with what's in, what's in front of you.
Now, the CARES grant, um, it has to be COVID-related. Well, loss of revenue is COVID-related.
So, I'm.
Recoup any loss of revenue because of the shutdown.
No, ma'am. Um, under the CARES Act, if we, if, you know, based on our understanding, we've worked with, uh, um, a, a number of municipalities on this issue, it is for direct related expenses that you have incurred as a result of it. It doesn't cover, you know, for the sense, look, insurance companies are fighting their business owners over business interruption, right? This, this is almost similar to that, other than the CARES Act doesn't designate loss of revenue related to COVID as one of those items that's reimbursable. It's going to have to be direct expenses that, on initiatives and things that you do uh, within the community to, um, to, to, to address this issue.
Also, has it been a memo sent out to all department heads and elected officials asking them to cut their budget a certain percentage?
I will defer to Mark, uh, on, and Sabrina, if she's on the call for that one.
Yes, no, at this time, no, ma'am, that has not been done.
Uh, won't we need that information? Um, nobody knows what they can cut more than the department head or the elected official. So, uh, I think we need to give them the first choice of what, uh, they know that they can do without this year that was in their budget. So, um, otherwise, you know, we may be talking about furloughs down the road. So, uh, it would behoove all of us to be working, uh, with each other and the department heads and the elected officials. Even though the elected officials, once the budget is approved for them, they can keep it. But we're asking all departments to cut, or we should be asking all departments to cut a certain percentage out of their budget, if at all possible. And if not, they need to come before, uh, Mark and the finance, uh, committee and the chairman to tell them why they cannot cut, uh, an expenditure for this year. But we, we need to get them on board before we have our mid-year retreat, uh, because definitely they would know better than we would. So, um, and I would just suggest that we, we start on that as soon as possible. But, um, go ahead.
No, I, so let, let me just, again, so, so we're not, um, I, again, I don't want to, want you to leave the call. I think the initiative was to get through this meeting, get together with this, the, the finance staff and Mark about looking at whatever your options are, some on the revenue side, some on the expense side. Um, the way your budget is structured, I've always indicated that roughly you have about a nickel at any point in time between what you bring in and what you spend. There's about a 5% margin there at any point in time. When we start to talk about cuts, if we go, if we talk about it proportionally, just to make sure you're, you know, you understand that out of a $100 million budget, about 60, 60% of that number roughly, um, is public safety. So structurally, you know, it's, it's, you know, we can't cut the bu, you know, I'm not saying we can't cut. The, the, the budget cuts don't have as meaningful an impact on the finance department as they would have on public safety. So, that's a global, I mean, it's, it's, it's very easy for us to say, everyone go out and cut 10% of your budget. Uh, and that obviously would fall, you know, proportion, you know, in proportional terms on the public safety environment, which is going to then lead to a number of policy issues that you're going to have to decide. Our goal will be between now and that retreat to provide you with a very comprehensive assessment of what you can, what you can do, not, not just what you can do and let you decide on how you want to go about doing it. Uh, but we are at that point where critical decisions will probably need to be made on the revenue, revenue side and the expense side. And Mark and Jennifer and I have talked about that and we're proceeding, you know, moving forward with coming up with those options for you.
Uh, well, that's why I think it's very important to get with each official and each, uh, department head as soon as possible to see what is possible. Maybe some things can be deferred to next, uh, that was in the budget for this year. It can be delayed, so, um, and, um, when you talk about revenues, um, I don't know if you're hinting at a, uh, tax increase. That'd be like kicking someone while they're down, because people are already hurting. So I, I think that should be the last resort. But with that, I yield back.
So, let me, again, if I can just, I'm sorry, I'm not hinting at it. All I'm, all I want to do is make sure I provide you with a range of options, uh, that are available to you and, and how you prioritize them, obviously, is, um, important for your community. I just want to make sure you have the options available to you.
Thank you so much, um.
Yep, no problem.
And I just wanted to share with you briefly, Commissioner Guyder, that some provisions are being made to speak with those, uh, constitutional officers and also our directors to have budget improvement requests. All those are frozen and the goal is, and I'll be chatting with all of them to just, just, to just allow us to make it through this year. And certainly they don't have a choice, uh, based on our conditions, uh, of the budget at this time. So, I'm, uh, that conversation, I've been chatting briefly with some of our, uh, folks that had something in the budget. But certainly business is not as usual and of, of course, uh, the COVID-19 is requiring behavior change and this budget will require one as well. So we, we, we have to make adjustments. It is what it is and certainly you cannot get juice out of a ton of and our citizens are, they're down right now. So, we just want to, we, I know you're going to give us several options and, uh, I appreciate you and all the work that you're doing. And Commissioner Carthman, I see you, you came up on, on the screen. Commissioner Carthman, then we're going to move on after you.
Thank you. Uh, Chairman Jones, uh, Director Teal, have we came up with a plan in relation to the COVID, um, CARES Act? Uh, one of the things that I was reading that you sent out to us in the email was that, uh, Governor Kemp states that what we don't use, we would have to give back. So has there been a plan to, uh, use those funds so that we don't have to send them back to the state? And looking at the report that was provided, it seems as though we've only spent about $172,000 in relations to COVID-19 expenditures. So if we're requesting 1 million, low level 1 million, how will that, uh, impact us? What, what are we going to do with that? Because I haven't seen anything.
Okay, and let me, let me start first, Mark, and then I'll allow you to chime in. Certainly, uh, right now, Mark, the hazardous pay is not 100,000, it's 500,000. So that should be included in that number for the 1.6 and also CSB was 410,000 or 405,000 because of the offset that we had to go there. So I'm believing that's, that's part of the projection. And then, of course, the $150,000 that was allowed for me to utilize in, certainly the Board of Commissioners to share on those homeless population veterans. And we're using, uh, right now, I believe we used about 40,000 of those dollars and we will continue to utilize. And this, this, uh, number goes out to the end of the year. And I agree with you, Commissioner Carthman, because we have that 5.5 million dollar pocket, I would like to see, and we do have a plan that's coming, actually Tiffany was going to present that plan this morning. That plan is also, it includes our small businesses, because we did have Chris Pumphrey and, uh, we had Sarah Ray approached the Board of Commissioners several, um, probably about a month ago. And certainly when we were looking at the hazardous pay, we were not in the position to help. So we do have a, a litany of things that we will be able to offset, not only just for county government. We want to be able to help our businesses and, and, and other avenues. And Mark, and I'm not sure if you have that list, but Tiffany was prepared to give a big, uh, PowerPoint presentation this morning, and I apologize, she's under the weather. Uh, Mark, please chime in. And then, for Commissioner.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll send, uh, the numbers out that we have, uh, paid to date. And yes, it's, uh, including the numbers in the resolution plus the expenses from, uh, departments. I'm just, I'm throwing a number out there. It's approximately 6, 700,000 dollars to date. Um, but I'll, I'll get you the exact number, um, later today.
Is it also my understanding that now we can get reimbursed for the funds that we utilize to give hazard pay? Because I know beforehand we were stating because we didn't have a resolution or an ordinance for that, that we couldn't get approved.
Yes, ma'am, but that was if we were getting reimbursed from GMA or FEMA, which that's different from the CARES Act. But it's my understanding that, yes, the hazard pay is included, um, any money that the Board decides to give to small businesses. And I know that came up a couple of months ago, um, and it may come around again. And as far as, you know, the hazard pay, um, the other items in the resolution, I think, um, that we have spent plus, you know, the the expenses from the departments, which is probably a little under $200,000. But I'll get, uh, I'll send those totals out.
Okay.
To date, uh, to date.
Great. And, and it's just, uh, you know, I, I'll say this. It behooves us to utilize everybody on the Board of Commissioners when we're doing these things. It kind of seems like we're working in silos and I don't want us to work in silos. We have to get everybody's input so that collectively we have a plan that everybody feels good about backing. So, um, I know, you know, we, we've not been in person, so we can't talk as much, but still utilizing a way to get the input of each of the commissioners, I think is viable and making sure that we have a plan that we all are on board with. But with that, Madam Chair, you.
And also, Commissioner, just to respond to your question, we just received notification, uh, a couple of days ago about this funding. And the goal is Tiffany Stewart Stanley and all of us, we would, I, particularly me, was going to put all of us at the table together so we could talk about a plan. Nothing is set in stone yet, so no, that is the plan, so we can get a list of responses from everybody and input regarding this money. Particularly, uh, the small businesses are important to all of us and we want to come back to the table. So that is being discussed. And that money, we just really released the information to you all about three days ago, four days ago, so it's still fresh in our minds and we have not moved, we will not move without the Board of Commissioners and I promise you that. So we're not working in silos. We just, we really, I was just blown away that we got this money and didn't realize it was coming. So excited about that. I call it a bailout. And, uh, hopefully CARES Act 5, um, I believe 4 or 5 will address, uh, maybe offsetting some revenue within the, in the counties. That would be great if we could get to that point. So, stay tuned, it's coming. I was hoping Tiffany would be here today, but she just didn't make it. And Commissioner Mitchell, I see you. So, do you have anything to add?
Just, just, just a couple of things. So, so David, um.
Yes, sir.
The 3% to 5%, I, I think, I'm leaning on where Commissioner Guyder was going with this. What, what is that in numbers? If you have to put a number with that, that's $1 million, $8 million, uh, my first question.
That's a good question. So, Shanique, can you post the matrix on, on the screen for us, please? So, wha, what I have now posted on the screen, um, is what that matrix looks like. So, go, go to the prior page for me, Shanique, page 3 of the slide. So, Com, Commissioner Mitchell, at the bottom of the, uh, presentation there on that particular page, a 1% decrease in revenues, approximately $977,000, roughly a million bucks. And, and a 1% increase in expenses is basically a million, a million, million, two, a million, two. Right? So, you know, we're bouncing between, if you go to the next slide for us now. So you can go across and say, you know, look, if I have a, a 1% increase in expenses and a 1% increase in, uh, 1% decrease in, in revenue, that's the impact right there. So that would be, in this case, a $2 million roughly impact to your general fund in terms of your existing fund balance, right? So we've tried to create this matrix to give you a sense of where this may end up at at the end of the day.
Got it. And we were anticipating about a $5 million increase in revenue based on the mere fact of what we had budgeted, am I correct?
Correct. So your budgeted number, uh, your budgeted number was 97.719 for the year? Your prior year revenue for 2019 was approximately 92 million.
And, and, and I know you're going to go, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
So, so that's where the $5 million increase came from.
Right, well, I get it. And, and I know you'll, you'll review all this once you guys go to committee and then we'll go out on our retreat and do all these numbers and additions and cuts and whatever that ends up being, though. But share with me, how is a hiring freeze? If we, if we didn't hire anybody, or we hired somebody, then you're right, that will have an impact on the budget as an expense. But freezing it, nothing more than that dollar won't be moved or, or expanded.
Yeah, so, so that, well, so, so there, there are probably, and I don't remember the exact number and I apologize, it, within your budget, for instance, the, the, um, public safety has so many designated vacancies that you have, you have funded. If those jobs have not been filled to date, that money will go back, effectively go back into the general fund. It go back, it goes back into the fund balance, so to say, right? So, you know, we're assuming, you know, historically, you have budgeted for a dollar, but you've spent 98, 98 cents of that every particular year, because vacancies aren't filled, projects are delayed, something is going on within that. We assume that that cushion, that 2% cushion will, will also be recognized this year, because you're now diligent enough to know that if I haven't filled the vacancy by now, I might as well not fill that vacancy by now. And there's been a hiring freeze, so that vacancy will not be filled. Now, the balance of that is, we're, we're, so instead of saying, we're not, we don't think there's going to be an overall decrease in the expenses. We think it's going to probably end up being similar to, um, you're going to come in almost at budget this year. And part of that, part of the issue is, if you, uh, Shanique, can you put up slide 3 again for me, please? You, you've got the 2020 pension adjustments, you've got, you've, you've approved, um, you know, whether the CSB funding is reimbursable or not, I, I, you know, I'm not quite sure. So, some of that offset that I thought you were going to see in the due, we've seen your budget, uh, your budgeted expenditures are actually being, you know, you have to take into account, you've got about $2.7 million of unforeseen items that have now come up that would have all, that have taken that out. So my thing, my, my theory is that you're probably going to come in right at 100, somewhere around $102 million at the end of the day.
Okay, okay. I, I, you know, we've got a lot of work to do here, but.
Got a lot of work to do.
And, and, you know, as Commissioner Guyder stated, I, I, I hope, I'm, I'm, I'm hopeful that there's not a, a military increase. But my thoughts are, I don't see anywhere around it, but we'll see where that ends up, though. And I know that's not your job to tell us kind of what that looks like, but we'll, we'll see at the retreat and we'll see what you, what the finance committee come back with, so. I'll, I'll yield back and leave it there.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Mitchell. And that, that being said, we're going to move on to the next item and thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. We're going to move on to tab number four. We have, uh, three resolutions that's coming up and I'll just read what, read through those are about and certainly allow the, uh, legal department to chime in. Tab number four is a resolution to regulate and provide, uh, for the calling of election to authorize Douglas County to exercise redevelopment powers and for other purposes and authorize the chairman to sign all necessary documents subject to final legal review. And certainly, uh, Ken, would you chime in on that, um, Attorney Bernard?
Yes, ma'am. You, you're talking about the resolution.
Yes.
I'm sorry, you cut out.
Uh, tab number four, yes, about the, for the redevelopment powers.
Yes, Madam Chair, uh, the legis, the local delegation at the State House, uh, let, state legislature passed a local bill that authorized the calling of an election by the superintendent of elections or the supervisor of elections in the Board of Elections for this November's ballot to have a referendum question about the county having, uh, redevelopment powers. This is merely a ministerial act of carrying out that legislation so that it's on record that the, uh, Board of Elections and Registration will have a so that it's on record that the Board of Elections and Registration will have a referendum regarding the redevelopment powers. This is not the approval of a specific TAD. This is not the approval of a specific anything. All it is, is enabling legislation so that if the voters pass a referendum, the county would have the same redevelopment powers that the city of Douglasville has and other counties and cities has. Any potential TAD would have to be vetted, obviously, and approved through another process. This simply is authorizing us to have those powers that are conferred by state law. And so it'll be on the ballot. I have talked to Milton, Milton has requested that we pass this call, even though technically the legislation is the real call for the ballot question. And it'll be on your November ballot and they are prepared for this. We are just doing our part so that their records are documented correctly.
Okay, thank you so much. Any questions from the board before I move on to the next item? Okay, I'll move to tab number five, a resolution supporting House Bill 426 to Georgia Enhanced Penalties for Hate Crimes Act and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Legal?
Yes, Madam Chair, Madam Chair, you asked us to put this on, but as you're aware, because of our meeting schedule, the, the House Bill 426 passed, both houses, was signed by the governor on June 26th. But you still wanted this left on to show the importance of the board's support for this Georgia Enhanced Penalties for Hate Crimes Act so that the board could make a statement on that issue. It has been prepared and of course, with those directions and that, it stands before you now. But it is the law in the state of Georgia now.
Okay, thank you so much. Any questions from the board? And the next, and next item is tab number six, a resolution in support of the CDC recommendations of wearing masks, face coverings in all public places where social distancing is difficult to maintain and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Legal?
Madam Chair, this at your direction and based on the conversation that this board had earlier with Public Health, it's simply a resolution supporting the CDC's recommendations regarding face coverings in public places, et cetera. It is not a letter, it, it is not a direction, it is not a law. It is just showing our support that people take the best practices steps recommended by the CDC for face coverings and other such social distancing as they recommend in public places. So this is an affirmation of y'all's intent to recommend strongly that folks follow those guidelines.
Okay, thank you so much, Attorney Bernard. Any questions from the board or comments? All right, I'll move on, Commissioner Carthon.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. Allow me to take the floor. Attorney Bernard, some of the, in the resolution for the redevelopment, if you look at it, redevelopment is not spelled correctly, so you may want to have Jennifer take a look at that. We don't want Chairman Jones signing something that's not totally right. And, okay, and so all three of the resolutions have gone before legal? And you, you have had a chance to, to look at it, Attorney Bernard?
All three of them have, have been drafted out of the legal department. They have changed because of various and sundry things and they will be reviewed by me as soon as I get off this speaker to make sure they are spelled correctly and everything else. There's been some back and forth between the legal department and the commissioner and also Tiffany Stewart Stanley on some of these because what was going on at the state at the same time. So I can't, I'm not going to lie to you, I haven't read today's version because it's changed 14 times. But I promise you tomorrow, it will be spelled right, it will look pretty and it'll have my name on it.
And it will have, wonderful, that's what I like to hear because you know how I am. And secondly, is this, so are we, the entire board going to vote upon this? Or is this just Madam Chair's resolution?
Well, the, the board is going, it's a, it's a resolution proposed for the board's consideration by Madam Chair.
Okay, because I only saw Madam Chair's name on it, so I wasn't sure if this was coming from her desk or, or if it's for the entire Board of Commissioners.
The resolution will be signed by everybody. If it passes, it just simply is in draft form for today because there's some turning events in the last week or so.
Gotcha.
It may have changed the ultimate, but it is a board, board resolution for everybody.
Wonderful, I think.
Jennifer Moore is on and she's hearing this and those changes will be made.
All right, I trust, I trust you. I, I just wanted to make sure that we were all on board. I think they're great resolutions and, and definitely they coincide with what we are trying to do as a board to ensure that we are having fairness and equity across the board and what we stand for, especially the masking up, the campaign that Chairman Jones has started, great campaign. And we definitely want to, to jump on board with the chamber and the state of Georgia in regards to the hate crime bill. And so I'm excited. Thank you so much. I yield the floor, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Carthon. All right, we're going to move on to tab number seven, business items. Authorization to renew a maintenance agreement on August 1st, 2020 through July 30th, 2021 with Doran Precision Systems in the amount of $9,975 for teen driving simulator and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. We have Major Holmes, are you on the line? Mark, can you speak to this item for Major Holmes or? Mark?
Yes, ma'am, sorry, I had to unmute. I think he's on here, he was on here earlier.
Is anyone here from the Sheriff Department on here?
Yeah, Bobby's on.
Okay. He must be on mute. Well, what we'll do, we'll come back to that one since he's on.
I'll call him real quick, Madam Chair.
Okay, I'm going to move on to tab number eight, authorization to award a on-demand consulting contract to Atkins North America Inc. And authorize the chairman to sign all related documents, Director Valentin.
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This item was approved by the board back in May. The, the name listed on the contract was Atkins as opposed to their legal name, Atkins North America, Inc. So this is essentially to correct their legal contracting name.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board? I believe that's pretty self-explanatory.
Madam Chair, I do.
Commissioner?
Director Valentin, how are you? I feel like I haven't seen you forever. I'm good. Was, how was this caught? Like who caught this in, in the process to bring it back before us?
It actually, we sent the contract to the company and it went to their legal department. And it was their legal department that caught it.
Okay, great. So this just raises a flag as to we have to make sure that when we send things out, we are following the letter because we don't want to have to come back and do things like this and they appear back on the agenda. So we just want to make sure that we, we're doing our, our part before it goes out. Because again, we don't want to have Madam Chair, who represents the entire board, to be signing things and then they're not right. So that was all, thank you.
Understood.
I yield the floor, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you so much, Commissioner Carthon. We're going to move on to tab number nine, authorization to award a consulting services contract to AMCOM Technical Services Inc. And authorize the chairman to sign all related documents, Director Valentin, once again.
Yes, Madam Chair, this is similar to the previous item. In the contract, we, we listed ACOM, which is their common name. But their, their contracting name is ACOM Technical Services, Inc. And so this is to correct that element of the contract.
Okay, any questions from the board, comments?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Robinson?
Right, which I, I think to, to Madam Carthon's point, we've got two line items here. I mean, we went through a process of RFQ, went through a process of selecting a certain set of vendors to be on standby. And we, we talked about standards, we, we talked about protocols. We, we talk about how we maintain, and this is where we'll, we'll eventually get there, the inconsistency and inequities that exist within the system. So we're maintaining internal errors to include. But we exclude those who try to come into the system with typos. And we're talking about major million dollar contracts versus maybe just entry points. Right, so again, I, I can't sidestep certain things that are in your face. Just like, okay, wow, look how convenient we're being. It's okay for that to happen for that, but it's such a high double standard for that. Just a point to be duly noted, yeah, we're good, we, we're good on what committees have approved regarding on demand, so you're okay. That was more rhetorical. I yield the floor, thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Robinson, point well taken. And if there are no other questions, we're going to move back to tab number seven. This, thank you so much, Director Valentin, as well. We're going to move back to tab number seven, authorization to renew a maintenance agreement on certainly with Doran Precision System in the amount of $9,975 for the teen driving simulator and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. And I believe, Mark, you will provide an update?
Yes, ma'am, Mr. Holmes having technical difficulties, but I talked to him. So this is an annual agreement and there is no increase. It's the exact same as it was last year and it's just the maintenance agreement on the teen driving simulator. That simple.
Any questions? I, I see Commissioner Carthon.
Thank you, Chairman Jones. Director Till, I know that this is under a dollar amount, so it didn't have to receive three, I guess, three quotes because it's under that amount. However, do you know if the Sheriff's Department looked at any other maintenance agreements to kind of make sure, again, that we aren't being overcharged? Like just, just to make sure it's in alignment with what others are charging in regards to maintenance service? Because I noticed that this company is out of New York. So I was wondering, okay, so if they're out of New York, they're probably a third party vendor, which means that they probably have to get someone who's here local to handle certain things. So in my mind, sometimes it just behooves us just to, and I know it's, he's an elected official, so he can choose whoever he wants to. But you, as the county administrator, if you'll just kind of reiterate to them that as we're trying to cut costs and, and make sure that we're in alignment with what the going fees are, that they, they kind of take a look at that. It's just a suggestion.
No, this is, I mean, this is a renewal, so I'm assuming they did not this year, but they would have in the past. But no, I'm assuming they did not this year, but I don't know for sure. But, because this is an annual agreement and there's no increase, so it's the same as it's been for the past couple of years.
Okay, but again, do you, do you see where my concern lies in, in regards to? Okay, all right, so I just wanted to put that out there. But thank you so much. With that, Madam Chair, you yield the floor.
Okay, thank you so much. We're going to move on to tab number 10. Tab number 10 is authorization to amend the election provisions of the ACCG Retirement Services Plan Agreement for certain elected and appointed officials as Class IV employees and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents, Director Perry.
Yes, ma'am, good morning, Madam Chair and Board of Commissioners. Wanted to follow back up with this item that was tabled from the last meeting. I did get an opportunity per our discussion to follow up with each of the commissioners just to kind of do a deeper dive into this item. I've also invited Paul Bates, the, our region manager for ACCG Retirement Services to join us on this call. I would like to call on Paul right now just to, to give a recap, an overview of this line item and, and, and kind of give some, some points about it and then we can, we can go. Madam Chair.
Is now exiting.
Morning, everybody, thanks Frederick. The documents, again, as Chair said, is allowing in-service retirement for cer, certain elected officials, those Class IV employees. This change would not create any unfunded liability, no increase in costs by itself. The actuaries are currently doing evaluations to allow for a targeted retirement at age 65. And so because the planned document does not change the age, it will not create any unfunded liability.
And Madam Chair, I just, you know, wanted to come back. I know that we wanted to have some individual conversations surrounding this, this proposed amendment. So with that, I'll, I will yield to any questions that you or the commissioners may have.
Okay, thank you so much. I see you, Commissioner Guyder, Commissioner Guyder?
Yes, and I did receive an email from a previous employee. The rank and file employees that qualify under this, are they excluded?
Madam Guyder, this would be specifically for Class IV employees, so would not apply to rank and file employees.
So a fireman that is, or a deputy that is 65 and they qualify under the same criteria that these Class IV employees are, are qualify. They cannot do this, but the elected officials can. Is that right?
Yes, whoever falls in that Class IV category, this would apply to them, but it does not cover firefighters or anyone that is, that's not elected, that's correct.
Is this discriminatory?
Paul, I, I, I'll yield to you, Paul.
Class IV is what I'm saying. And I, I, I didn't think about this until someone brought it to my attention that they have to retire by 2021 to keep from losing their back pay and everything. So is this, why does it exclude employees that fall under the same criteria as the Class IV employees?
Madam Chair, Madam Guyder, I'm thinking that we're talking about two separate issues that you just mentioned. You mentioned December 31st, 2021, that's the sunset clause for the sick leave retirement bonus. They wouldn't lose anything, there would just be the end date for those funds to be calculated in their retirement benefit. So that's one item. The other item would be what we're discussing right now as far as the amendment to allow in-service distribution of retirement funds to Class IV employees. Yeah, the Class IV employee, it does streamline this benefit to focus on particular, particular elected officials. And it would not be available to, like you said, rank and file employees. Paul, if you would, and, and we talked about this, we talked about the availability of this particular benefit to regular employees versus specific classes, could you speak to that?
Well, it's certainly permissible under the plan. The board would have the ability to do that. The question I heard earlier was, was discretionary, discriminatory, excuse me. That would be a question for your legal department from a personnel standpoint. But regardless of the plan, the IRS says it is permissible to allow in-service retirements, again, only at normal retirement age. Any earlier than that is not allowed by regulators.
Only those that reach the age 65. And they can't go ahead and retire and receive their benefits and then continue working.
Currently, your plan does not allow for an in-service retirement. This document that's before you would change that and allow for an in-service retirement, normal retirement, only to elected officials if you voted to make this change.
Well, the director and I, we talked about this and, you know, I didn't really have any problems with it until someone pointed out, it does not apply to everybody. It's just a class of people. So I don't know if we should look at going forward. Most people retire before 65, I would assume, but what if they don't? And we're treating them differently than we are elected officials. So I, I think it's something that merits some further conversation going forward. I guess we could, if we amended this today or tomorrow, just on the Class IV employees, we could go back and look. we could go back and look at another time about rank and file people that turn 65 and continue to work.
That's correct, Madam Guyer. We could go back and review the full impact of allowing this benefit to be accessible to all employees. We could look at that, that impact as well. We could come back and certainly make that change at a future, at a future date.
Well, nobody likes to break out a class of people on anything. And so we might need to have further conversation going forward on the rank and file employees that continue to work. And where they could drive their employment because of their retirement, because they do not get to retire twice. Is that, is that correct, Director? You said that they could not retire. If they took their benefits now, they could not, again, take those benefits when they actually quit work.
Right, that's correct. So if this is approved, they could retire and continue to work, but there would be no service or there would be no, what's the word I'm looking for, Paul? There would be no increase in benefits.
They would accrue no additional benefits under the plan once they initiate their benefits.
Okay. So if there's no cost to us for the Class IV employees, it should be no cost to us, any further cost to us for rank and file employees, right?
That is a good assumption, probably a correct one. I did not ask that question specifically to the actuaries, but I will certainly do that as a follow-up.
All right. Thank you. And I yield back, ma'am.
All right. Thank you so much, Commissioner Guyer. If there are no other questions from the board, I'm going to move. Okay. Oh.
Yeah, I can't let this one go. All right. Yeah, this, you know, I appreciate Madam Guyer's point about Class IV and to that, to our citizen, this is, this is what they call golden parachutes that get created along the way, if you're not paying attention. They happen in executives in private companies all day long, where there's certain compensation of benefits that are extended based on certain classes. It's nothing new. It's something that happens all the time. This one just happens to land on our watch. I was not aware nor did I drive this one. Obviously, I'm not going to be eligible for this at all. My question becomes if this was considered part of our overall compensation. So is this considered compensation, Director Perry?
Well, from the standpoint of retirement, retirement would be considered in the full compensation package, so I would have to say, yes, it would be.
Yeah, all right. So this is sort of where we as Board of Commissioners, here we are, I'm going back to consistency. So this thing is before us and we're included in that Class IV employees. And we're voting on something that gives us direct benefit. I'm just going to deal with us. I'm not going to deal with anybody else as it relates to any other elected or appointed official, nor am I really concerned about the rank and file. I think the argument was made and duly noted, Madam Guyer. But I looked at how this was framed. It's like, okay, now why are we in this? I don't hear no objections from people saying, it's interesting how we're, we'll push something out there for $200 in compensation, making it such a big deal. We try to smooth stroke this one, this is compensation, like, look, it's a whole class of, look at this. That's my problem about systemic inconsistency. Uh huh, right? All we went through, and I don't hear anybody yelling from the sideline about what this would mean. Still compensation, right? Right? It's that, and it's that awareness that, why I sit here and say, okay, really? So now I've got to sit here and vote on something that, okay, on one hand, we went through three, four months of all this $200 for expense account. But then here, we about to spot a whole class of citizens, a whole class of us, about to deal ourselves in to a golden parachute. Uh huh. Uh huh, I see. See, and so that's, uh huh. And so the question becomes, not could we do this, it's, should we do this? And again, I don't know who's on the list that would qualify this at any time in the near future. I mean, again, I don't, so I could, I'm pretty neutral on how this would flow out. I don't have a lean one or another. I'm making a very obvious point about how we apply policy, right? And it's going to be consistent with this. All right, so here we are. Now, just like Madam Guyer, should we, I see that we're, should give consideration to rank and file. So I guess my question is, do we take the Board of Commissioners on this? Because we're voting on ourselves. I mean, I don't know, did we require, did we need a public hearing? Did we need to? I mean, now, this may be part of a plan that we've already blessed, so therefore it gives you certain exceptions and provisions, but I'm just looking how, while there's no concern about, the Board of Commissioners are dealing ourselves a parachute. And nobody's saying anything. But we pick and choose what we want to highlight. But I get it. It's okay. I'm not certain where I am on this going into tomorrow. Like I said, I'm not, I don't have a position per se on the merits of it, and if somebody has earned it, I don't have a problem with that. I won't get into that. I'm at, my job is to focus on policy, and I'm just going to stay in my lane. So with that statement being said, I'm going to yield the floor and I'll reserve the rest of my commentary for tomorrow. Thank you. I'm good.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Robinson. And I see you, Commissioner Carleton.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have one question for Director Perry. Can you tell me how many, I guess, individuals that this will directly impact and if any of the Board of Commissioners? Because I kind of hear where Commissioner Robinson is going, and I don't want it to look like we're trying to deal ourselves in. I mean, clearly, I am nowhere near 65, so that, it wouldn't benefit me anyway. But, but I do want to know, what's the number? What are we looking at in terms of numbers?
Well, roughly, the individuals, the number that would qualify would be about 18, 18 elected officials would fall under Class IV employees. Not all of them would qualify for, immediately qualify for this benefit. I think it's about maybe six or seven of them that would immediately, are immediately eligible to, to qualify for this benefit. So that's what we're looking at. We're looking at roughly about 18 total, and seven would immediately qualify for it.
Got you. So it's, they can elect to take it or not to? Is that correct?
That's correct.
So it would be up to the individual. It just wouldn't be automatic?
That's correct.
Okay. And Mr. Bates, to you, you said this would be no impact on us financially.
That is correct. The benefit at age 65 is assumed to be fully funded. That's what the actuaries are, that's the roadmap they're laying out for you to get those dollars into that plan at that age. So because you're not changing the age, you're not changing the course.
The course, okay. Clear enough. All right. Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I yield the floor.
Okay. Thank you so much, Commissioner Carleton. Those were some great questions that you had for certainly Fred and then also Paul Bates. All right, with that being said, our Board of Commissioners, you have the information and certainly we will move accordingly with the vote tomorrow. Let me move on to tab number 11. And tab number 11 was Authorization to execute a professional services agreement with Lionheart Consulting Group to facilitate leadership and diversity training and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. I really, I read it out loud, but we're going to place this one on hold because all the BIR budget improvement requests are on hold at this time, but certainly, definitely very in favor of facilitating leadership and diversity training. It's just right now, we don't have anybody in the building. Everything is kind of real and stands still. But Fred, so I'm asking if we could just, I would like to bring this one back, okay? At a future date. And it could be sooner than later. Just want to make sure, okay? All right. Because all the other BIRs on hold, and I got them all on hold right now, and it would just be unfair to really move forward with this. So I'm going to move on. Board of Commissioners, I see Commissioner Robinson, you have your eyes, I see you.
May I?
Yes, yes, sure.
This is where, I allowed Madam Carleton to drive the whole conversation regarding the resolutions, because that tends to be her sweet spot. But I'm going to go back to the hate crime. All right, now, I'm going to go back to the need for diversity. I'm going to go back to need, like, but what are we doing at the local level to make change? It's great that we embrace the state and what they're doing and go Congress, but what are we doing as elected officials to ensure that we're translating that at a local level? This is when we're directly saying, we're talking about training. Do we adopt the resolution that the state says, hey, we need to focus on these, these areas? Like, but yet here we have a chance, right here, to ensure that, to translate that within this administration as if it's exempt from what's happening in the broader world. And I'm like, okay, why are we pausing on something that we're, on one hand, we're saying one thing, but then we're, again, we're not focusing on what we need to. It's essential. This is not a non-essential. That hate crime, it was like, no, we got to do this. It's not all, it's a nice-to-have type of training. This is real. Well, y'all think the protests are going on out there. Like, we can't live in a bubble. It's too, it's too serious. It's too serious for us to sit here and say, and we just, we sidestepped that, and that's what, I just, we, I, I'm going to allow what would happen. We can always revisit because we're talking about it. But I think we're missing a moment here. How, on one hand, are we going to talk about what the state, yeah, we're getting behind and riding their coattails, but it was time for us to put our, take a position and be serious about, no, and even in our house, this is important. I just, I think we're missing something here by pausing on that. You don't have to be in the building. I believe that this was all about remote training that allowed us to facilitate this, and the timing is now. But okay, but duly noted. I just think that when we advocated for this last year, we thought, even during last year's budget, we knew it was important. Now, in light of it, six months later, in light of pandemic, in light of protests, it's even more important. Like, no, you've got to take time out. I mean, everybody's remote. Everybody's, not everybody, most people are remote. Oh, you ain't in traffic no more. I mean, how, I mean, it ain't like real pressure is being put on our employees per se. So you've got time for training? You, if this is important, or are we just sort of smiling and going through the motions? So it's just something I'd like for us to at least consider. I know it's on the work session agenda. I know it's been asked to pull off. If my peers agree with that, then that's fine, I yield. But it's something, I think we're missing something. On one hand, we're going to pass a resolution to embrace hate crime, but yet we don't translate into our own local policy, something to ensure education, training, even from our leadership. In other words, well, y'all need to do that over there, public safety. Yeah, that's good over there, over there in judicial, but as it relates to administration, basically the White House, oh, no, we're good. We don't need to do that here. I have a problem with that. I, I just, I think it's something at least that needs to be considered. But okay, I get it. Go ahead, Madam Chair, we got to get through this agenda. I yield. Thank you.
Certainly. I want to certainly, tab number 11, and I agree with that, certainly I appreciate Commissioner Carleton bringing forth the resolution on racism. Certainly, I've taken the initiative for the hate crime. And certainly, again, when I certainly wanted to pull it off as a BIR, I wasn't looking at the entire moment of certainly the situation we're dealing with in terms of just the moment. I couldn't agree with you more, Vice Chairman Robinson, at this time because of the situation. Certainly, I'm saying we still are not in the building, but that has nothing to do because we do have access to technology. Fred, this is something that we talked about when I first came on board. This Lionheart, we've been talking about Lionheart forever. Why did it take, number one, so long to get it here? I've been talking since 2017 about Lionheart. What happened? And certainly, it's just something that I will allow the Board of Commissioners, we need to, we can discuss it and move it forward because the time is now, but and also can we talk about the impact? It's a BIR. What is the impact? But what's, and it certainly doesn't matter because the impact overall will be allowing this country to move forward, and that's what we need to do. Tell me what the impact is, number one?
Total amount that has been approved for this train is $50,000.
Okay.
And that is what the agreement is currently written for. Agreement is currently under legal review, but the total amount, to your question, would be $50,000.
Okay. And then we've been waiting since 2017. Why was it, did it take so long? Because I've been.
And Madam Chair, to my understanding, it's not been since 2017. We just put that in as a BIR for the budget, this 2020 budget.
But I've heard Lionheart before, the name. But anyway, make a long story short, we will move forward with this tomorrow because it makes sense. And certainly, again, I was just, again, trying to stay in the, leaning on the wall of BIRs are not approved, but at the time and moment, it makes sense to move forward. So we will move forward. Any comment on this particular item, Board of Commissioners, this tab number 11? Let me read it again to make sure that you hear it loud and clear. Authorization to execute a professional services agreement with Lionheart Consulting Group to facilitate leadership and diversity training and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents subject to final legal review.
And Madam Chair, if I may, I do have Lionel Savage on the, on the line as well. He was going to just kind of give a brief overview of the Leadership 150 Training as it's been dubbed. Since I have him on the line, I, you know, would ask if he would be allotted a few minutes to kind of talk about and, you know, give some insight as to what he has in store for Douglas County in terms of diversity and leadership training.
Okay. Thank you so much, Lionel. Would love to hear from you. This is a perfect, perfect storm, for lack of a better term, and would love for you to chime in and tell me what this would do for the county, and I'm excited about the diversity training. So if you could proceed, Mr. Lionel?
Is he there?
Fred, we can't hear him.
Let me see here.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I assume my camera is also working. You don't see me?
I saw you earlier, Lionel. You may.
Maybe it's because.
There you go.
Great, great. Good afternoon.
No, we don't, we still don't see you, Lionel.
Try one more time.
You see me now?
Let me see. Yeah, I don't know why.
Well, your voice, your voice will work as well.
Yeah. All right. Well, I see everyone else. Good, good, good afternoon. Thank you for an opportunity. It's been, it's actually been an education to sit here and listen to the civic matters being led by this great commission at the meeting today. I want to briefly talk to you a little bit about what we'd like to do with the leaders of Douglas County. We're calling this Leadership 150 and commemorating the 150th anniversary of Douglas County. We've really broken this down into three parts. There's a pre-engagement part where I was going to spend time with each one of the commissioners to talk about what we're going to do in detail to get any last-minute feedback from you. I was also going to spend time with the county administration leader, and then also meeting with those department heads that Director Perry has selected to be a part of this engagement. In that pre-engagement activity, we're also going to do a Myers-Briggs Type Indicator assessment and a Gallup Strength Finders assessment to really get a really good sense of where your current leaders are, understanding their personality types, understanding what their strengths are. And then that would lead us into what I'm calling our Leadership 150 curriculum. And I'm able to send this information to any of the county commissioners to read at their leisure at a later, at a later point in time. But if I were to go through the major points, the Leadership 150 curriculum, you know, we're really looking at four main things that we're going to cover. Leadership and influence, leading through change, you know, change is everything for everyone in public service right now. When you look at the leaders for Douglas County, the different departments that they lead, leading through change is critical because every day they are doing something that's dramatically different than what they were just six months ago. And then also leading a diverse and inclusive culture. And so, you know, with that, those three, those three parts of the curriculum that I just mentioned are a total of eight hours in instruction period that myself and my five-member team will take part in. We also have added, because of our virtual solution, Madam Chair, you know, I was going to be there in person, but because of our virtual solution now, we've also added a women's leadership panel. we've also added a women's leadership panel, um, and additional executive coaching post-engagement, uh, with twenty of your, uh, twenty of your department heads, uh, pre-selected, uh, or selected during the time of our curriculum. Uh, the additional coaching that we're going to do, uh, would be three coaching sessions per, uh, per department head, uh, three forty-five-minute sessions over the course of six-week time period. And if I may, uh, to, to tell you about the team that I'm going to include, uh, that's going to be working with me, we have a total of about a hundred and seventy years of leadership experience. Uh, I have very senior people who have had leadership positions in, in government, private industry, and we have a very diverse, uh, leadership team made up of two men and three women, uh, from all over the U.S., including, uh, someone that's from Georgia, Susan Roma, who is, um, going to be fantastic on a women's leadership panel. Uh, I, I'm going through this very quickly, because I know you guys have lots of business to take care of, um, but I'm open for any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much, Lionel. That was a great, um, segue into just, uh, again, thank you for reminding myself about this virtual, uh, solutions at this time. Certainly, I'm, uh, I've had a plethora of diversity training in other organizations prior to arriving to, uh, county government, and certainly would like to see this infused here, and it's been very beneficial. And love what you just mentioned about leadership and influence and leading change. That's because we are always managing the unexpected, uh, and who moved my cheese, and all those things that are needed as we mesh this melting pot of diversity together, uh, in county government, and also wanted to allow it to spread beyond just the doors of Douglas County. My question to you, Lionel, will, will this, uh, this now, because this is virtual, would we have an opportunity for it to be Facebook Live, so our citizens could look in on it? Because, again, this is changing culture from the inside and outside, from both internally and externally. What can we do? Is that a possibility? Because I'm excited now, and I thank you again, Vice Chairman Robinson, who just sparked my interest again, because, again, I was leaning on dollars and the time, but the time is right, right now, for this to move forward. So will the citizens have an opportunity to, to look? If this, I mean, they may not be able to chime in, but could they be able, would they be available to, to attend some of the classes? If it's Facebook Live, or can you explain that to me?
So, so my first answer to that is, I am so excited by what you just asked me. Uh, because it tells me that you understand, um, the larger impact that this could make. We, you know, we've been focused for a couple of years on the department leadership. If we thought that we had an opportunity to make a broader impact to your citizens of Douglas County, I, I'm more than excited. What I can't tell you is, is that I don't know how to, you know, I'm not sure how we do it on Facebook Live. Um, I have a technical team that's working with me. If you give me, uh, you know, if you give me twenty-four hours, I can come back and give you a response. I've already had meetings with, uh, the technical folks from Douglas County just on being able to provide a very robust and intuitive session inside of Microsoft Teams, in which we're going to be doing online polling, we're gonna be doing, uh, virtual breakouts. We're going to be doing everything, um, to make sure that people are engaged and not just looking at some funny-looking guy through a computer, you know, for two or three hours. Uh, just to give you even more, uh, impact of what we're going to do, we're, we're, we're gonna do all of our instruction in bite-sized nuggets. So we're gonna be doing micro-instructions, meaning that every twelve minutes, we will do something different during the course of our instruction, because we do understand, uh, what it takes to keep someone's attention looking at a computer, you know, in their dining room somewhere in Georgia, and a person's talking to them six hundred miles away. So we have, uh, so many things that we're working on to make sure that it's an engaging activity. So to add in other folks, uh, from the county via Facebook Live or some, some other way to do it, I'm wide open to that. I think my team, once they hear this, will be so excited. Uh, if you can give me twenty-four hours, I'll send you an email, uh, back to the county commissioner staff to say, here's how I believe we can do it. I just don't want to tell you, yes, we can do it, and technically, it's not possible, but I will find that out, uh, very quickly.
Okay. Thank you so much. Any other comments from the Board of Commissioners or questions from Mr. Lionel?
And I'm so sorry you guys can't see me. I.
I know.
I got my fancy tie on and everything.
We saw you earlier, so thank you. Any questions from the Board of Commissioners, any comments? I see. Okay. Well, sounds pretty self-explanatory. We're excited about it. Certainly, uh, Mr. Lionel, you'll will, uh, re- respond back to me, because certainly I wanted to be in, internally, externally, and it'll be, uh, this is an opportunity for the entire county to capture this moment of diversity. Okay?
I have one, I have one question, uh, while we're waiting for legal review. Uh, a- and you can see in my detailed, uh, you may not see it today, but in, in my detailed, uh, offering to the county, you know, I wanted to spend some time with each one of the county commissioners, um, you know, since they're all here. If they, you know, if they still would like to do that with me, I'm willing to talk with people as early as this week. I want to try to move things along as much as possible while we're waiting for legal review. I know you all are very busy. I'm not gonna hold you for a two-hour phone meeting, but just to answer any more questions you have in detail, I will give you it, as all the detail you'd like in our one-on-one discussions, and also with the county administrator as well.
Thank you. And Director Perry, will you, uh, just contact our each individual, uh, legislative base for, uh, and also my executive assistant, to see if we could, uh, place Mr. Lionel on our, our calendars, and we'll go from there?
Thank you. Thank you very much, everyone.
Oh, okay. Thank you so much, and I appreciate you again for just opening my mind, but at the time, I'm looking at dollars. See, that's why it's, it's, it's nice to have two eyes on something, because I'm thinking just about dollars, but right now, we, we're in a moment, not only about health, but we have to look at the entire moment, and we do have other things going besides COVID. We have a major protest in this country going, and we need to address it now. All right, let's move on to the next item. Let's, the next item is tab number twelve. Authorization to finalize and distribute a new computer use policy for all Douglas County employees, as recommended by the Technology Committee. Uh, Director Martin, uh, Russ Martin.
Well, I hope this is the easiest thing y'all are looking at today.
We don't see you either.
So the, uh, that's, I'm, I don't have on a fancy tie like Lionel did, so, um, the, the computer use policy is most people's first interaction, uh, during orientation with the I.T. department. Uh, it is a document that describes the proper way to use our technology, expectations that we have for people when they're using technology. Uh, and so the document that had been in place had been in place for probably eight to ten years and just needed some, some significant updating, uh, to bring it back up to, uh, up to just modern language, if nothing else. So if I could, if, if that's on, he was gonna cover a couple of the significant things that changed, uh, and then that'll do it.
Yep, I'll come here. Yes. Uh, so some of the biggest changes were, we updated our password requirements, we made it a lot stronger. Um, so that's fourteen characters, complex, um, sequence essentially. Uh, and then the thing I'm really excited about is requiring multi-factor authentication for Office 65, which is our email and Teams and, uh, Word documents and such, and also through our VPN connections. So any, most, most of the connections from, coming from outside into county networks, just build up to secure that and protect us. So, um, and like Russ was saying, we're gonna distribute this through electronic formats. It's that way you can read it through your computer and acknowledge the agreement online, so.
Okay. Thank you both, Russ and Dat Lu. Appreciate your, uh, presentation. Board of Commissioners, you have any questions regarding our computer technology use policy?
Yeah, sure.
Uh-huh.
Madam Chair. Yeah, so maybe I, I'm, I might have anticipated this was something else. Um, uh, we talked about use of our technology, our computers. Um, does it establish, and maybe it's, it's, it's in the technology language, and I may just miss it. So I'm, I'm okay with being, being wrong on this one. Um, as relates to, for example, you said Teams, and for example, um, uh, is there a protocol or standard for, for example, borders for consistency of experience, uh, or buffers? Is that addressed in this at all? Did y'all talk about that here?
I don't think I'm really exactly understanding the question.
You, you didn't. You, you, all right, so it's not here. It's not here. Uh, what, and I'm, I'm gonna, for, 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 for my vote and for my consideration, I'd like to see something that recently happened, um, uh, by use of Teams. Right now, you see directly into my home, right? Uh, and the question is, is that if I have something that, um, may offend someone, I don't know. Let's just say, if I had a picture of Obama sitting in my background right now, someone who's not a fan of Obama may get offended by that. But you have direct visibility into my home. Um, and someone, they asked me to remove my picture of Obama, which is, but you're in my home. And, and so, and so there was this whole conversation that was having internally about, um, well, since you're using county equipment, you have to, you should remove that which is in the background. And, and so now you're getting into this whole, hold on, you're in my privacy of my home. But the simple answer was, well, well, you don't pay for my Comcast, you don't pay for my electricity, per se. But, but, okay, I get it, and it could be simply solved by, uh, we have to coexist. If we're, based on beginning of our conversation today with Dr. Bimar, was like, guys, we're gonna be in this pandemic for a hot minute. Right? And we're gonna have to do this telecommunion, um, to Madam Chair's leadership, which I agree, for a minute. Now, I know we got slammed into this thing, because, again, we didn't anticipate this, and we hadn't really, to your point, brought up our code, uh, brought up our policies to reflect the current times. A pandemic, and, you know, ten years ago, Facebook and all that stuff, wasn't, I mean, I was still MySpace in it. Right? Here we are, this thing is full throttle. A decade later, this thing is, you know, what it is. So, and with this whole Teams and Microsoft. So the question becomes, uh, think about residential and commercial, when the two come side by side, we have what? We have buffers that are put into our code to separate the two. In other words, you got this big giant wall, it is million-square-foot, whatever, you got this house, it needs to be a buffer. And so my question is for this right here, can, can we insert some language that says that anybody that does business on behalf of the county, whether you're elected or appointed, or a department, that if you're representing the county, that there should be a buffer, uh, whatever that tool is, um, um, whatever that tool is, um, that you can put a buffer up, uh, a background, as they call it, so that we can separate the two worlds? In other words, like, no, we get it. Your house is your house, and no one is right to tell you what to do in your house. No one, but you. But at the same point, you're trying to coexist. So can we, I, I'd like for some language. We don't have to solve it right now. Uh, but can we, uh, and I, I have a recommendation of what it could be. But this needs to be applied immediately. In other words, it needs to be consistently across the board. To Madam Guide's point earlier, well, okay, we're gonna pick an asset class. We're gonna focus on just a district commissioner, but not all other elected officials? Right? Back, back to the consistency. I, I, I appreciate her, her, her thought, her mindset earlier today. Um, I'd like for some language to be inserted here. Uh, and I, again, I'll yield to my, uh, my colleagues over the Technology Committee, uh, or perhaps the Programming Committee that may, uh, wanna handle this differently. But since we're here, um, you know, you know me, I'm able to, to alter something right in the motion. Uh, I'd like to see something regarding, uh, buffers and borders to be inserted for this adoption. Um, I yield the floor for that.
Okay, I'm gonna chime in right quick, and just wanted to let you know that immediately, yeah, the conversation has been had, but just, uh, beyond the borders of just you and I. I did have an opportunity to speak with Mark and also Russ Martin, if you're still on the line, uh, about buffers. And I was under the impression that a, a, a buffer could just be inserted from the, and knowing, you, you can tell about my technology experience, that we could just have one buffer that could be seamless across the board. But it's my understanding, and, and I saw, also did my research, it, it would, uh, the buffer has to occur on your end, uh, which is the user end. And Russ, are you still there? Because I know you researched it for me and looked at it. Are you there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, can you share that with Commissioner Robinson? We did talk about it, and Mark did, uh, contact you and, uh, asked a question for me, because I want to make that happen, but I think it was impossible. So can you chat about it?
Yeah, so currently, the technology within Teams does not exist for us to be able to force a background as administrators. That's, uh, i- it's an option built into the client, so it can be changed, uh, on the client end, which is you as the end user. Uh, and as of now, there is no administrative functions that allow us to force a particular background. Uh, so Commissioner Robinson's, you know, assertion that we need to deal with it via policy is absolutely correct. Um, we do need to, you know, determine, do, do we want to standalone policy for that? Or do we want to include it in the, uh, computer use policy? I think it's perfectly appropriate to put it in the computer use policy, uh, and to admit that it is not even in this current version that we're asking to approve.
And I agree it needs to be inserted, but if you could just make sure that it's, uh, also explained to the user on other end, it's, it's, they have to make that change, so it just need to be explicit, because I agree it definitely needs to be in the policy. I'm beginning to use it, uh, every time we meet, but I want to make sure that it, it explained on that end, that it's not automatic.
Well, okay, then, then I guess I will, a- and somebody else can chime in, I guess, but I would, I'll just, um, suggest we push this to the next agenda and allow us to make those few updates and bring it back.
Okay.
Madam Chair, your pleasure.
Okay, yes, we'll just bring it back on the next meeting and just make sure, you know, we have all the language inserted, so our, the user will be very well informed. And Commissioner Carthen, I see you, you have something to say. I love it, because when you all appear on the screen, I know it's time to talk.
My, my only question is, has this been reviewed by Director Perry from the H R perspective? Just to make sure, or the legal team, just to make sure that all our I's are dotted and our T's are crossed. Uh, I know, you know, depending on what the, uh, the severity of, um, you know, crossing the policy or not following the policy, I'm pretty sure that there are some repercussions to that. So just wanted to make sure that all of those things have happened before we sign off on it, when it, whether it comes back tomorrow or at another time.
Understood. It was, it was written in such a way that any enforcement of any, uh, policy violations goes to the, uh, department head. That way, we don't get into any, you know, crossfire as far as I.T. trying to enforce something in a different department. Uh, so we do leave the enforcement of it up to department heads. Um, so, but, so, so that's, that's how we try to mitigate needing to engage personnel at, at that level.
Okay. And Director Perry, I don't know if you're still on the line. Is, is that good with you? Do you?
That, that does work for me, uh, Commissioner Carthen. Um, uh, you know, if, uh, if, uh, Director Martin has said that, uh, you know, they've taken the necessary steps, you know, I can yield to him, and I, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. That is all, and have, has, um, Attorney Bernard had a chance to look at it yet? If you, if you know Director Martin?
Uh, they have not. I can tell you that has not happened.
Okay, all right. I look forward to the, to the update of it, but I'm, I'm glad to, to see it coming forward and it being revamped. So thank you, and, and, um, and Dat. Y'all doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I yield, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you so much, Commissioner Carthen. All right, well, we'll just, uh, certainly we'll look for it, uh, in the next, uh, our next meeting, which would be, uh, the July twentieth meeting, uh, Russ and Dat, if you could just bring it forth at that time.
Yes, ma'am, we'll be ready.
All right. Well, Board of Commissioners, we have one last tab, which is tab number thirteen, before I ask for an executive session with the, uh, acceptance of the Federal Transit Administration CARES Act grant in the amount of two million, five hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars on behalf of the Connect Douglas and amend the budget and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Director Watson, good morning. I mean, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Well, there, there's been a lot of conversation about the, the CARES funding, uh, during today's meeting, and, and I'm, uh, happy to announce that a large portion of that CARES money was set aside for transit systems throughout the, uh, the country. And Connect Douglas is part of the, uh, allocation for the Atlanta region, has been awarded two million, five hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars, uh, to help us through, uh, this year with our various, uh, COVID-related expenses and issues. And also, uh, FTA to me was very, uh, far-sighted in understanding that, uh, as we move forward over the next couple of years, transit agencies are going to still be recovering, uh, from this. So they're allowing us to use some money, not only for this year, but in, um, a couple of years after that. And I've got a break, I'm gonna try to put a, a breakdown on the screen. Let me see if I can get this done. Yes, this is how we're proposing to spend the, the CARES mon- money over about the next, um, four years. And one big, uh, item in it, as you, as you can see, is, uh, FTA and federal highway is going to allow us to use one point seven million dollars of this to fully fund the bus service one hundred percent from May twenty twenty-one to May twenty-two. Uh, so that's really going, going to help us as, as we recover from this, uh, pandemic this year and, and moving forward. We feel like we've really got the money allocated in the best possible way for our use over the next three or four years, and this is going to help us a lot.
Okay, thank you so much, Director Watson. In fact, I have a question for you, since this funding has come through. You know, typically, what we do, the Board of Commissioners particularly, is we have the Connect Douglas on our budget, and as we move into our budget workshop, or should I say retreat, that's coming up in the next couple of weeks. So are you indicating we don't have to worry about budgeting that typically $400,000 that we've done in the past, you know, as, as we were looking forward to do every year? That match $400,000, is that not necessary this time, or can you explain?
Well, in, in our calendar year 2021, which is also the county's fiscal year, we'll have to budget a little bit of that $400,000, but not the full amount, because the CARES fund will kick in in next May of 2021 and cover 100% of the bus service from May through the end of the year. So the, the local portion will be significantly lower than it usually is.
Okay. Okay, any questions from the board before I move on?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Carthen.
Thank you. Director Watson, how are you?
I'm good. How about you today?
I'm good. My question is in regards to safety. So since we have the CARES Act money, are you implementing more safety measures in regards to that, since we know COVID will be with us for a while longer?
Yes, ma'am, that, in that $210,000 amount you see for 2021, that will be directed exactly what you're talking about.
Okay, and what about safety as far as the drivers continuing to educate them and making sure that they are keeping safety on the routes, the buses, picking up patrons, safety of the buses themselves? Are we, are we allocating any of that towards that type of training and safety?
Yes, ma'am, and certainly, personal protective equipment will be, will be part of that, making, doing the best we can to separate the drivers from the riders on the buses, sanitizing the buses on a regular basis. All of those things that we can do to not only keep the driver safe, but the patrons as well.
My question to you is, is there a mask policy to ride Connect Douglas?
We're, we do not require a mask, but we have masks available. As the patrons get on the bus, all the driver can do is ask them if they would like a mask, and if they, when we have one available for them.
Okay, so we do provide them if they, if they are in need of one in order to ride the bus, okay? And if someone gets on the Connect Douglas bus, is it automatic that the driver asks them if they see that they don't currently wear one?
No, it's, it wouldn't be automatic, it would just be more of a casual type thing, asking them, you know, just, do you need a, do you need a mask? Would you like a mask? Certainly, there's no, not gonna be any pressure.
Okay. Got you, but we have actually facilitated a way that if someone got on the bus and they needed one, that we would be able to give them, provide that for them.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's incorporated in your cost. Sounds good, fair enough to me. Thank you so much, Director Watson.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Carthen, and thank you so much, Director Watson, for bringing the good news to us today. We need to hear something good in our ears today. Last but not least, Board of Commissioners, we have a board appointment, and certainly that will require, is for the Cobb Douglas Board of Health, and that is to be discussed in executive session. So at this time, county attorney, do we need to go into executive session?
Yes, ma'am, we need to go into executive session for litigation and.
Is now exiting.
Okay, you said, okay, all right. Okay, Board of Commissioners, with that being said, do we have a motion to go into executive session?
So. Second.
Twins today.
Lisa, figure it out.
We have a motion and a second. I believe the motion was made by Commissioner Gaiter, and the second was Commissioner Carthen. And then when I call your name, just indicate by yes, you know, yes, that you would go into this executive session. Vice Chairman Robinson?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Carthen?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell, Henry Mitchell III, and last but not least, Commissioner Gaiter?
Yes.
And Ramona Jackson Jones, the chairman of the Board of Commissioners, yes. We have a 5-0 unanimous vote, and the motion carries. So I ask that you log off your computers, and citizens, we will be back momentarily. We have a quick executive session, and we will return momentarily. So with that being said, Board of Commissioners, you need to just not log off, but just click out, and then you will receive a phone call. Thank you. All right, thank you so much, citizens of Douglas County, for your patience with allowing the Board of Commissioners to engage in an executive session. Our executive session is over, and before I end this meeting, certainly would like to yield to all of my commissioners to see if they had anything in terms of announcement or something they want to say to citizens. And I'll certainly, I'll close with my hammering discussion of certainly dealing with COVID-19. Commissioner Carthen, do you have anything today that you would like to share with the citizens? We can't hear you. We can't hear. Yes, Nat.
Is it?
Yes. Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just like to say, kudos to all of the volunteers that Commissioner Mitchell and I had this past Friday, July 3rd, as we did our community food drive in honor of our veterans. We had many veterans to come out, and I just have to give a special thank you to, to American Legion Post 145. Ruth and Tommy were absolutely amazing to allow us to use that facility, actually, two days in a row with the delivery and the distribution. It was amazing. We served over 210 families. We had people who were bringing up donations for us to give, so that's how we were able to do that. Again, with Wellstar, with some students out of Delanica that actually donated cloth masks that we were able to give to constituents as they came up. Just the donations were overwhelming. We were able to get those out and into the hands of the community and the veterans, and it was a success. So thank you, Commissioner Mitchell, for all of your help, and just wanted to say, job well done. Thank you.
And also, don't want to admit the fact, Commissioner Carthen and both Commissioner Mitchell, that you also pushed the importance of the census, so thank you so much for that. All right, any other discussions from the Board of Commissioners?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Gaiter?
Just to reiterate what I said earlier, Ephesus Baptist Church is having their drive-through pantry this Wednesday from 3:00 to 5:00. And anyone that needs some help with food, please feel free to go, okay? Thank you.
Sounds great. Commissioner Mitchell, I see you're on the screen. You have anything?
Oh, no, no, no. Kudos to what Commissioner Carthen stated, so great job what we did Friday, so outside of that, great job.
Okay, thank you so much, again, to the Board of Commissioners, thank you. And then also to the citizens of Douglas County, we want to continue to see what we can do to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19 in Douglas County, and this is a collective effort on all of our parts. And I appreciate the full support of the Board of Commissioners, supporting me along with this educational campaign effort. And citizens, just stay tuned, we will have a lot of information coming to you, and also just some things that's just basic general reminders about not only you're wearing your mask, but also washing your hands, and also watching your social distancing. The new buzzword today is the three W's, so if you could just continue to do those and just stay mindful, we all will get through this together. Again, this is a marathon and not a sprint, and it's gonna take a while, and it's a behavioral change. And I promise you, if you find a mask that fits, you will be, you won't even know it's on your face. It's like a brand-new pair of shoes, sometimes they hurt, and you don't want to wear them anymore. But if you find one that fit, you love those shoes to death. So if you could just find a mask that is comfortable for you to wear, I'm highly recommending. I know it's certainly not a mandate at Douglas County right now, because we are under the governor's orders, but we are just asking you if you could join us in this campaign of keeping each other healthy. With that being said, citizens, we ask again that you just remain committed and support us, and we will see you tomorrow at our Board of Commissioners meeting at 10 o'clock, and thank you so much, and have a great evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair.